All right, I think everyone's waiting on me so I don't have to say it's time to go. All right, here we go. It is 2:08 PM on this Tuesday, August 12th, 2025, and I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Clerk Woodley, will you please do roll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. President Smith?
Here.
Vice President Mayberry?
Here.
Trustee Dr. Nicolet?
Good afternoon.
Trustee Westlake?
Here.
Trustee Phoenix?
Present.
Trustee Ho?
Present.
Clerk Woodley, present. And Student Trustee Maya Hartley. All present and accounted for, madam.
Thank you. And on that note, welcome Maya as our new Student Trustee here on the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. It's welcome to have you. And since you are the reason why we do what we do, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the liberty of justice for all.
Thank you, Maya, and welcome. Now we'll move on to item 1.04, our land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will. Some were drawn to leave their homes in the hopes of a better life. And some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We acknowledge that some of our educational structures are situated in the traditional homelands of the Washu, Washo, Nuukmu, Northern Paiute, Niui, Western Shoshone, and Nuuwu, Southern Paiute peoples. We pay respect to their elders, past and present. These lands continue to be a gathering place for Indigenous peoples, and we recognize their deep connections to these places. We extend our appreciation for the opportunity to live and learn in their territory. That closes item 1.04 and brings us now to something very exciting, the ceremonial swearing-in of Shawna Baker as Chief of School Police for the Washoe County School District, item 1.05. So Superintendent Ernst and I have a few remarks that we would like to share with you and with the public. And so, on behalf of the Board of Trustees, we would like to officially welcome you into this role. Something that we wanted to share was that the safety of our students and our staff is one of the highest priorities for this board. And this community knows that because we created the entire beam of safety and belonging. Well, who are those people? Look around you. We have many people here from other law enforcement agencies across Washoe County and Northern Nevada. We thank you so much for being a part of this moment here. And we are incredibly grateful to our school police. And you are deserving of this honor for the years of your service, for what it is you've done, the way that you lead and the way that you model everything with the integrity of the office that you hold and the badge that you wear. And we're so incredibly grateful to have you in this role. And so now I'd like to invite Superintendent Ernst to share a few words. Following that, we will have the oath as performed by Clerk Woodley, and then Chief Baker's wife, Melinda Baker, will be doing the penning ceremony.
Thank you, President Smith. Really an important day in Washoe County School District, and it's my absolute pleasure and honor to welcome you into the role of Chief of Police for the Washoe County School District. Throughout your service and our work together, you have consistently demonstrated exceptional leadership, a deep commitment to student safety, and a steadfast dedication to building meaningful, trust-based relationships across our schools and our community. These qualities, Chief Baker, have earned the respect and confidence of those you serve, and you see many here in support, and those who serve alongside you. I'm confident that under your leadership and with your continued focus on service, integrity, and care, the Washoe County School District Police Department will not only uphold its strong traditions, but also grow in ways that meet the evolving needs of our staff and our students. Your experience, your judgment, and your heart for this work have brought you to this important moment. And we're proud to stand with you as you take on this critical role. On behalf of the entire administration and our leadership team, we look forward to partnering with you in this new capacity and benefiting from your leadership and your guidance in the years ahead.
I believe I stand over here.
Yes, sir.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So just so everyone knows, I've known Chief Baker for many years, over a decade, and I'm honored to do this with you today.
Thank you.
When I first met you, your character, your demeanor, your respect, and the way you held yourself so professionally, I was really impressed. At that time, you were a sergeant. It reminded me of another sergeant that I worked with in the gang unit. I won't mention his name because it's not about him. But he is here, he knows who he is. But you impressed me since then, and I'm so happy and so honored to do this with you.
It's an honor to have you do it.
Thank you. Okay, so raise your right hand.
Yes, sir.
Repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Shawna Baker.
Do solemnly swear that I will support, protect, and defend...
I do solemnly swear that I will...
Support.
Support, protect, and defend...
The Constitution and government of the United States of America.
The Constitution and government of the United States of America.
The Constitution and government of the State of Nevada.
The Constitution and government of the State of Nevada.
And the regulations of the Washoe County School District.
And the regulations of the Washoe County School District.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Whether domestic or foreign.
Whether domestic or foreign.
And I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Allegiance and loyalty to the same.
Any ordinance, resolution, or law...
Any ordinance, resolution, or law.
Of any state notwithstanding.
Of any state notwithstanding.
And that I will faithfully perform...
And I will faithfully perform.
All duties...
All duties.
Of Chief of Police.
Of Chief of Police.
On which I am about to enter.
On which I am about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Sorry, you'll sign this.
Yes, sir.
The real document. This is the photo.
Thank you, sir.
And I will take this and sign it over here. I'm left-handed, I apologize. I will leave this here.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you. And thank you.
I prepared a speech because I knew I would be nervous.
Yes, I'm glad that you did.
I'm deeply honored and profoundly grateful to the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees, Superintendent Ernst, and to the entire Washoe County School District community and the community at large for entrusting me with this role of Chief of Police, a privilege that I do not take lightly. As I step into this vital position to serve our staff, students, and families, I also wish to acknowledge the former chiefs and dedicated officers and their legacy that brought me to where I am today. I'm eager to build upon their legacy and leadership. Sorry, I'm trying not to cry. I'm thankful for W C S D's guiding principles of integrity, stewardship, trust, respect, accountability, collaboration, humility, knowledge, and continuous improvement and appreciation. My focus will be on advancing the district's strategic plan, ensuring a safe and belonging environment, supporting a strong start for every child, and empowering all learners for their future through innovative and equitable policing practices. I'm thankful for the input from students, families, and staff, and I look forward to fostering trust and a positive school climate through open dialogue and partnership. Moving ahead, I am excited to lead with transparency and dedication, addressing immediate safety needs while planning for long-term success. Thank you again for this incredible opportunity, and I am committed to making a lasting impact. Thank you.
All right, don't go too far because our board, we're going to go up and take a picture with Chief Baker, and then we're going to invite all of our law enforcement representatives to also join us in a photo as well.
2.9? No, okay, seeing no lights on. JJ, do we have any public comment for items 2.02 to 2.19?
Pablo Navaduran for item 2.07.
Welcome, Mr. Navaduran.
Hello, guys. My name is Pablo Navaduran, and I was speaking on 2.07. I'll talk about why we need to zone before the design of a school year because because they're going to build like 700 or 800 capacities at Mathieu Elementary School because they're going to try to reason their question for nearby other schools like Case Smith's or Waver Mitchell or Karen Elementary School possibly. So want to make sure, make sure that we know what we zone is coming up on this next Thursday, and we want to make sure that we have to rezone them and make sure valid before we could design those schools. And we want to look, make it such like a new Vonnell School, which is a, with a bell new school, which no student come here. So we want to make sure that we think quality and we think conservatively. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Navaduran. I will also direct you to some of those very similar questions were asked by the board, and we have those as our supplemental materials because that's a very good point, and it did also come up with this board as well, too. And then the answer to that is from the facilities team.
Todd Bailey for item 2.12.
Welcome, Mr. Bailey.
Thank you very much. I do support the item that's up, what'd you say, 2.12, which is $106,000 for the legal office to assist in the transition of Neil Rombardo's, I guess he's retiring from the district, I didn't know that. So, the Committee to Fix Washoe Schools started with a question, how much does Washoe County School District owe when it came to capital improvements because we couldn't change a doorknob over a decade ago? We've since gotten a lot better at that. But today, what we want to know is, how much does Washoe County School District spend on outside legal services and settlements in the last 10 years? Does anybody know? Does anybody in this room know that number? It's okay, because guess what? I didn't know that number either. Now, when you have a complicated problem like this, one of the best ways to solve it is on the back of a napkin. And because if it's not simple, something's wrong. Now, before I reveal this number, let me just say, Mr. Rombardo's done a great job representing this district. He's done a superior job responding to every question I've had the entire time he's been here, no matter how ridiculous. And if he couldn't answer the question, he would just say no. And so I hope whoever occupies that office in the future brings the same dedication. And by the way, he did a great job representing the district, okay? He takes orders, just in case people out in the public don't know that. Mr. Rombardo does not make decisions on his own. He waits for direction, even if it's just a wink or a nod. And he doesn't go in the bathroom and wink and nod at himself, of course. So the number we came up with on the back of a napkin was $5 million over the last 10 years. According to the Washoe School District Data Gallery, okay, which by the way, thank you trustees and IT and administration for putting that together, and Brienne in the legal office pointed me over to that a few months ago. Nice, nice work. According to the data gallery, it's $5,858,246.75 in the last 10 years. Now, my question is, please explain, in the data gallery, it says checks by location, general counsel, insurance funds, okay? Is this a district fund or a private insurance policy? If it's a district fund, how is it referenced in the Washoe County School District budget? If it's a private insurance company, which company and what are the annual premiums? Now, if someone can answer this question verbally here at this meeting, I will not turn in this request because it's just a simple accounting question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bailey.
That's all I have for consent.
Thank you. Thank you to both of our speakers. So I'll bring it back here, and we have before us the option to approve items 2.02 to 2.19.
Thank you, Madam President. May I? I move that the Board of Trustees approves Consent Agenda items 2.02 through 2.19.
And I will second that.
Wonderful. We have a motion by Clerk Woodley. We have a second by Trustee Phoenix. Seeing no lights on for discussion on the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay. Right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you so much, colleagues. Now, that closes Section 2 in its entirety and moves on now to Section 3. These are our items for presentation, discussion, information, and/or action, starting with the first one, which is quite the celebration. Item 3.01, the presentation to celebrate the start of the 2025-26 school year with introductions of new school principals and voices from students, staff, and families from various schools throughout the Washoe County School District. This is an item for presentation only, and we have a wonderful team here with us right now. Our Chief Communications and Public Relations Officer, Michelle Anderson; our Chief Academic Officer of Elementary, Don Agnotti; and our Chief Academic Officer of Secondary, Dr. Troy Parks. Welcome, and let's celebrate the start of school.
Thank you so much, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, and trustees. Michelle Anderson, Chief Communications and Public Relations Officer. And with me to my right, and I'll turn over to them in just a few minutes, is Dr. Troy Parks, Chief of Academics for Secondary, and Dr., or excuse me, Mr. Agnotti, Don Agnotti, Chief for Elementary Education. I just gave him a promotion. As you mentioned, the start of the school year is always an exciting time, and we're so pleased to be here to highlight our amazing new school leadership and to hear from our families and students. For those of you that have been on the board for a while or who've attended our board meetings, there's been several variations of this presentation over the years. It's been in person and PowerPoint, and it's always highlighted just our new principals. However, always an educator and always wearing his principal hat still, Superintendent Ernst wanted to make sure that we highlighted all of our new leadership. And so what better way but to obviously highlight each of them, and then also to hear from our new principals in their own voices and several of our other principals, and of course, hear from families and students from across the district. But before we start that video, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Parks and Dr., or Mr. Agnotti.
Good afternoon, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, members of the board, Don Agnotti, Chief Academic Officer for Elementary. Very excited to introduce our new school leadership. Out of Spanish Springs Elementary School, Dan Kirk; Dietrichson Elementary School, Courtney Seago; Whitehead Elementary School, Sarah Timmons; Beasley Elementary School, Amanda Stulock; Kate Smith Elementary School, Jen Hodges; Lemon Valley Elementary School, Bryn Hall; Silver Lake Elementary School, Nina Walker; Sted Elementary School, Ruth Williams; Newsted Elementary School, Ryan Dutch; Lois Allen Elementary School, Jill Dickey; and Cannon Elementary School, Jamie Shaco.
And rolling right along, Troy Parks, Chief Academic Officer for Secondary. Also joining us, we have Eric Rogers at Palmer Elementary School, Michelle Will at Winnebago Elementary School, Richard Mardes at Mount Rose, Lisa Love at Huffaker Elementary, Courtney Lean at Collin Ranch, Sarah Zabel at Incline Elementary School, Leah Ramsey at Pine Middle School, Kimberly Crowley at Hers Middle School, Gina Curtis at Vaughn Middle School, Amanda Lobkowitz at the New Vaughn Middle School, and Dustin Beal at Shaw. And on behalf of the district and all of the Office of Academics, we want to thank those leaders in the past who have retired, those who are taking on new roles, and those who are stepping up to take on their first principalship. Remind us all, we exist to support them and serve them. They are the reason we have a Board of Trustees and all these offices is to serve our schools. So with that...
I'll turn over the video, but before we do, I want to acknowledge from my team Jeff Foss, our videographer, and Andy, who were instrumental in getting this video together. And people may wonder why we don't have the principals here in person. It's the second day of school, and I think that they might have had some choice words if we added one more thing to our plate. So we are honoring them virtually.
Families trust us with their greatest gifts. With that trust comes incredible power to enact lasting change.
An opportunity to create a positive school culture where students, staff, and families all feel supported.
Every student deserves a successful school experience, and every teacher deserves a leader that supports and values them.
We are going to have quite a few new teachers, new to district and brand new, coming right out of UNR, so, you know, coaching, mentoring.
I'm really passionate about attendance. I feel like I need our students to show up and be here so that we can provide them whatever they need.
Because this is where kids really learn to love school, and they find that they're good at things that they never thought they'd be good at.
I'm just super excited that the community here is just awesome. The teachers here are awesome. Everybody loves working here.
It is really important to build that relationship and make sure there is a supportive environment and a place that they're happy to come to and that they feel safe being in.
The opportunity to just impact so many students on a larger scale.
I'm excited to start my senior year. I know it's not going to be like the previous years for sure, but it's going to be fun.
Excited for a very fun year, exciting, and all the good things that we do here.
And there's a lot of kids coming in with a bunch of energy, so I'm really excited to see what they do with it.
Meet some new people, along with continue with all my sports.
I'm just excited to see new people, just make new friends, start getting out of my cover zone more.
To actually like know kind of where I'm going and what I'm doing.
I am definitely most excited to start my college application process.
I have good vibes about it because I know where all my classrooms are, and I have some best friends coming.
I'm lucky, kind of excited to come back with like all of my friends and stuff.
Having studies.
I have pretty good classes this year, so I'm just excited to see my teachers.
Somebody's new and like they need help finding a class, I will help them.
Yeah, we make them feel welcome.
That we're growing together. We're all learning something new together, and we're all growing.
Be ready day one, and welcome our kids with classrooms that are ready for them.
Me encanta el color de la comunidad, los maestros, las personas, la amabilidad, la empatía.
Come to work and sing and dance and play games, watch students learn, and have those aha moments every single day.
We're ready. I know they're ready. They've been ready since the Fourth of July.
We're looking forward to meeting the new principal.
I'm really excited about the new teachers, the new adventures.
Before you head out, I just want to say, first of all, thank you, Mr. Agnotti, Dr. Parks, and Ms. Anderson. Appreciate you putting the video together, capturing the spirit of the first day of school. It's a special time in students' lives, it's a special time in families' lives, and it's a special time in the school district. And appreciate the sensitivity as a former principal to allowing principals to be back in their buildings on that second day of the year. It's an important day. And I will say to all the trustees and those that are out in the audience, we're excited about the next generation of leadership in Washoe County School District. There has been real intentional work to build our leadership pipeline, to really recognize skills, attributes that leaders have that we can foster and cultivate to make sure they're successful in these new principalships, and we're really excited about the future. Something that's really important to share, and it's been great work from our HR team along with our area superintendents, and that has been, over the past year to the start of this school year, we've hired over 70 new building administrators. And to be able to take that on as a school district and be prepared for that level of change and have really qualified people moving into those roles, there's a lot to be proud of. I appreciate the work of Chief Human Resource Office Doug Owen, again, all of the area superintendents, Chief Agnotti, Chief Parks, to really put us in a position for another positive year going forward. So just wanting to acknowledge the work of everyone that's went into this effort. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations to everyone. All right, that closes item 3.01 and moves on now to item 3.02, the presentation to provide the Board of Trustees an overview of the academic accomplishments and highlights from the 2024-25 school year. This is a presentation by Joe Ernst, our superintendent, and the celebration continues into this item, Superintendent Ernst.
Thank you, President Smith. This is a real exciting item. Thank you, JJ. This is an exciting item for us to have the opportunity to share. This has been years and years of hard work. This has been collective leadership that has supported the efforts and the progress that has been made in our school district. And I cue this up by saying it was really a historical year in Washoe County School District, something that was unprecedented and hadn't yet been seen. And there's a lot that has gone into this. We'll start with the focus that we've had on strengthening climate and culture. We are an organization that has over 8,000 employees. When we add in all of our substitute teachers and others, our employees are nearly 9,500 employees, the biggest organization in northern Nevada, serving nearly 60,000 students. And we know fundamental to large organizations is having strong climate and culture. We've been very intentional with this work to make sure that that's really been at the foundation of our first year in these efforts. And so as we start to just kind of share some data with you, what we see is that we had a large increase in the participation rate. And those that are familiar with surveys, sometimes there can be a little survey fatigue out in among the masses, and to have a 17 percentage point increase amongst our teachers and our staff was really good to see because the more participation, the greater the validity of the results. We look here, perceptions of Washoe County School District reached their highest rate since 2016-17, and excited to say that more staff are feeling valued and optimistic about the future than any prior survey in Washoe County School District. When you look at this, you can see that this is the number of staff that did participate, about 3,700 of our staff members. And what I'd like to point out on this is that you can see staff collaboration. This is our staff and their survey giving us their perceptions. Seeing that staff collaboration went up. And so when we talk about feeling valued and we feel optimistic, collaboration's a key component of that. We also look at student behaviors. This is something that has been at the forefront of education, and what we see here is that, and again, behaviors, quality of WCSD and work stress are the inverse, can often throw people for a loop. We do want those numbers going up. And so we can see that student behaviors, that there is a gain in the perceptions that we are as an organization, doing a better job supporting our teachers who are supporting our students. We can see that the quality of WCSD at 62%, that's the highest quality rating that we've had from our staff since the survey began. And certainly reducing the work stress, we know that during COVID and the pandemic, that was a really difficult area. And so what we see is that amongst all areas on our staff climate survey last year, we made improvements, and this was our goal. Our goal was to really strengthen climate and culture, knowing that was the foundation. You heard Chief Baker today talk about guiding principles. We really have rooted and been explicit in working on climate and culture through our guiding principles, which stress trust, respect, accountability, continuous improvement, among others. And so we've really been intentional about the work we've done to strengthen culture and climate.
So I want to jump in here because what I see throughout this entire presentation is seeds that were planted and finally getting to see them bloom. And so something that I would like to call out here, in addition to the outstanding increase, is that when we look at student behaviors, when we look at work stress and those numbers going in a positive direction, I am reminded of the work that Dr. Paul Lamarcas did not too long ago to redo the behavior manual, and we took that on. So we heard from our associations, we heard from our team, we knew we had to work on that. Dr. Lamarcas led an amazing executive team to overhaul that, and so I'm not at all surprised to see those numbers improving in that area. So this whole presentation, to me, shows the quality of the work that's been happening and letting things come to their moment of fruition.
Thank you, President Smith. It's certainly years and years of hard work among many people.
Thanks. I know there's probably more to get through, but I don't want to miss the opportunity to say that I myself, and I'm sure others in this room and people in the community, our parents, can appreciate the hard data that we have here. I mean, I love the touchy-feel-good stuff, too, but it's important to show in hard data, actual figures, percentage points, growth, the accomplishments that we have achieved. And a lot goes to the hard work that the staff and administrators, the teachers, I mean, the teachers being willing to speak out and take a survey and let their voice be heard. That is so important because that's the only way that we're going to keep getting better is by the participation of everyone involved in this district. We have to hear from everyone. And I know this is a lot of hard work. I wouldn't want to try and compile all this, but numbers don't lie. And so this is wonderful, and I thank everyone involved. I know it's been a lot of hard work on our superintendent's part and his staff, and it's truly appreciated.
Thank you very much, Trustee Wes Lake. All right, so that was really the foundation. Then we really wanted to focus on chronic absenteeism. And so we knew that chronic absenteeism, really, all educators will tell you, when our students are here, we can teach them, we can make sure that they're learning. And we saw some really bad habits grow during the pandemic and chronic absenteeism spike in ways that we've never seen as a nation. And so what we've really had to do was focus on decreasing chronic absenteeism. And there was a lot of work that went into this effort. And I will say that this improvement, as has been mentioned already, is really the result of collective leadership and focus. And that's really important for us to always remember. But what we saw was that 71% of all Washoe County School Districts decreased chronic absenteeism last year. And you'll notice throughout the presentation, some focus on elementary school. You can see that over three-quarters of our elementary schools improved their chronic absenteeism. And interestingly enough, we know that chronic absenteeism patterns actually begin in kindergarten. And so we've really made some intentional work. Again, there are so many people to recognize for this effort and this step forward. We've recognized Dr. Lamarcas, I see him out there as well. I want to offer a very special thank you to Dr. Lamarcas, to his team, Rochelle Murillo, to Doug Taylor, to our area superintendents, to our principals, to our registrars, to our clerks, to our counselors. This was Washoe County School District wrapping all of our hands around our students, our families, to make sure that students are coming to school. And so it's really encouraging to see this progress. So sometimes, and we've done a presentation recently for staff, and what are some of the reasons that we have done that? Because it's important to identify those reasons. And again, in the spirit of collaboration, we have really worked to grow our athletics, clubs, and activities with the mindset that engaged students will want to come to school more. And when they are engaged, it gives them more purpose, it gives them more connectivity with peers that like similar things that they like. To me, this is one of the most staggering slides that we have up here. When you look at chronic absenteeism, we have made a significant financial investment to slot pay. Slot pay is compensating our teachers for putting these clubs together that are generated from student interest. The big number to look at is, in 2024-25, last school year alone, previously, we had a total of 105 clubs in our district. At the end of 2000, we added 365 new clubs in Washoe County School District. And that is a willingness from our teachers to take on these clubs, to run these programs. And this is really a great step forward. And I'll also say thank you to our trustees for being committed and recognizing the importance of this area and being committed to it.
So before you move on, what's the total number? Read that total number now.
So the total number is you add those two other ones together, what you get is 470 clubs in our school district. It's pretty phenomenal. We were doing a school visit yesterday, and we got to see in the showcase box in front of the school, all of the clubs with the QR codes that were available for students. And students just simply go, plug in the QR code, here's where it is, here's when it occurs, and they're able to really get connected. It was the lack of connectivity throughout the pandemic that really was significant. And so this is a way of increasing connection. Student Advisory Councils were very committed to this. We're very committed to listening to our students. They offer some of the greatest insights for us, not at a district level always, but also at a site level. And so we've committed to student advisory councils at all of our middle and high schools. We've also leveraged our data systems to really drive individual interventions for students. I would imagine there was not a time that you went to schools last year and you stop in and you talk to the principal, and I bet you, one of the first things they shared was the work they were doing around chronic absenteeism. And it was the ability to use data in a meaningful way, beyond just being data-rich and information-poor. This was using data, and so there was a lot of professional learning that occurred on how to best use data for the benefit of our students, to individualize our approaches to what they and their family might need. And then this was a real community effort. We partnered with the community to do an awareness campaign, good things happen when you show up. And so when we see these improvements, I hope it's an opportunity for everybody to just take a moment to recognize their part in these improvements because it's been the entire community recognizing how significant this issue is in education, and we've taken a step forward. As I will say, with all of the information we are going to share, and there's plenty more steps forward to take, but it is good to acknowledge and see that we are making progress and we are getting return on investments and making progress on strategic areas that we know impact our students. Just a quick overview, again, you can see elementary school down to 13.1. Here, we want a minus on the change. You can also see middle school, which had been really an area of concern. You can also see high school, and unfortunately, high school did not see improvements. High school is still an area that we are focusing on as an organization. We are looking to maximize resources. We are looking to maximize resources and supports for our high school. But we'll talk in a bit about some of the legislative efforts that were made. And we, as an organization, continue to find areas that there might be legislative opportunity. Many of you are familiar with dual credits. Dual credit classes, from a university perspective, end in the middle of May. Yet our students are required to come to class once they've actually completed the class. And so sometimes we see maybe some opportunities to create better alignment with competency-based education and student seat time. So there's going to be continued work in this area because when we see chronic absenteeism in high school, it is not just our lowest-performing students. In fact, sometimes it's our highest-performing students. And so these are signals. This is ways for us to use this data in meaningful ways.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Superintendent Erch. This is very, very important for us. This is something that is very, this is, it's not exclusive to our district. I had the fortune of being able to attend a national conference in Washington, DC with staff, principal and staff from Glenn Duncan. And what I saw there was schools from all over the nation. And almost every school had an opportunity to speak on what their biggest issue was. And without a doubt, chronic absenteeism was the number-one issue. Every presenter that I went to see, that was the big topic. Everyone selected that topic whenever there was open discussion. So to see these numbers, without a doubt, we're not going to ignore the high school. And of course, the statistics. So like you explained, you know, there's, you have to get into the numbers and the statistics. But I can't and we can't ignore or deny the success, especially in elementary and middle school. And I truly believe, and I know my colleagues will agree with me, that this is something that is important to us. We identify this as one of our strategic priorities. And we really appreciate you and your staff, your leadership, your guidance, to be able to dedicate the time, the resources on the improvement with the clubs, the ability to give the principals autonomy on how they, because I've seen some principals have some creative approaches on how it incentivizes interest into coming back to school. And it's great to see that they're not all doing the exact same thing. They know it works for their students. So that's awesome. Maybe some middle schools are not the same as elementary, so on and so forth. But I just want to give kudos and just acknowledge the great improvement that you've done here with you and your staff, and I appreciate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Trust. Thank you, Clerk Woodley. It's definitely the work of many to make this type of progress and significantly statistically significant progress. And I think that's great. You know, as we do recognize those that have played a significant part, again, really, near and dear to my heart is a great teacher in front of every student. And in working with our associations and working with WEA, they've recognized that slot pay is an important area. And so, again, it's around collaboration around these efforts that help make these improvements. What I'll say is that we have seen students, we have seen schools in our district have as much as 16 percentage point decrease in chronic absenteeism last year. And this is really significant. This is, and what is also wonderful, I think, about all of the data we're going to share, is it's through all different regions in our school district, through all different socioeconomic areas in our school district. And there's a lot of encouragement. The other thing I'll say here is kind of a story that I've shared previously. So the school, we had a school that's very near and dear to my heart, maybe was even a former principal there at one time. And they had the highest decrease in chronic absenteeism. I was really pleased to see that. When I went over to that school, I visited with the principal, and he said, "I've got to bring a student over to you." He said, "This student has already missed 20 days this year." This was in the springtime-ish. And I said, "Okay." And he said, "But last year, this student missed over 100 days." And so what we're talking about is reshaping behaviors. While that student that I had the opportunity to talk with and give him some recognition for coming to school more often, was he chronically absent last year? He was. But is 20 a lot better than 100? It is. And so what we talk about is this is every student making progress. And what we have also worked hard to do is our accountability team has worked with the Nevada Department of Education for over two years to build in a growth measure on the Nevada School Performance Framework so that when schools are demonstrating growth by decreasing chronic absenteeism, that they are getting recognized for that progress in schools. And so our accountability team has really led a lot of these efforts, and all of these things kind of come together. And when they come together, here's some of the things that you start to see. We had the largest increase in student proficiency in district history. And, you know, that one really just kind of slows me down a bit, gives me some pause. And just really, I look at many of the leadership team here, to our principals that we had a chance to celebrate last week. We talk about our primary focus is to improve learning for our students. And what we saw was the largest increase in student proficiency in district history. And more importantly, it was with every student population and program in our district. And I will tell you, this is our principals, this is our teachers focusing, doing everything they possibly can to make sure our students are learning. And you can see that this was the result of that. And in my previous role, we had the opportunity to norm against many districts our size and often came upon the conclusion that if a school district of our size was able to make improvements of 2% to 3%, that that was a really strong improvement. And in fact, we're not able to see that amongst many large and comparable-sized school districts. And so in ELA, you can see that the proficiency levels went up. You can see in elementary school now essentially back to pre-pandemic levels. And so when we stop to just kind of think about what these numbers mean, these numbers mean years and years of hard work. This was not any one single year. This was determination of educators over long periods of time to help our elementary schools. And then what we saw is middle school really take nearly up to 4 percentage point increase in ELA. Often, there's conversation around growth. And we talk about growth to proficiency, but to see this level of proficiency change in our school district for our students, that's what it's really all about. And we're really excited to see that and share that information with others.
Thank you, Superintendent Erch. Could you just, just for the public's recognition, could you just define SBAK and what grades those are administered in?
Thank you, Vice President Mayberry. So Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium. Say that three times fast. Nope, don't worry about it. Okay. So it is, and we affectionately known as SBA or SBAK. And this is a test that is a rigorous test that was put in place back in 1415, I believe was the pilot year, 1516 was the actual first year of data to really test students at a much higher level than had been previously assessed. And so that's the basic gist. Am I getting at your question?
And at what grade levels?
Thank you, Vice President Mayberry. So it occurs in third through eighth grade. And the other thing that I think would be good to mention is if you continue to look, this was the highest proficiency rate that we have ever seen in third grade. You often heard, "Read by grade three." And you've seen a lot of legislative ideas talk about the importance of becoming proficient readers by third grade. And so you could see that we had the highest proficiency level gains in third grade. All third through fifth grade, again, just being specific to elementary school, are at or above pre-pandemic proficiency. First time we've seen that since the pandemic. So since 2020, which, being a part of that pandemic, that felt like a long time ago. And, you know, this was a lot of work. It's the single largest one-year increase that we've had since SBA began in 1516. And then, really encouraging to see the progress in middle school. Middle school is often a transitional space for our students before going to high school. We're really pleased to see that. And the other thing that I will mention here is, kind of just spoke about those, but let me give, you know, a couple of things. We have focused, as a school district, a lot on the science of reading. This is under the leadership of Dr. Parks, our area superintendent, that really wanted to bring in the science of reading, letters training. You've seen some videos on what this looks like. Anytime you visit a classroom where you see teachers using the science of learning, you are energized watching the learning that's taking place. You saw recent legislation that has passed that is about mandating the science of reading. As a district, we've believed in the science of reading and the power of it. And so this was an area that we've worked on. The other thing that I want to point out here is what we affectionately call our collaborative schools. Our collaborative schools are the schools that we identify as a school district as schools that really could use some extra support and resources to improve academic outcomes based on historical results. And we have seen that our collaborative schools have been some of the most successful schools. So some of our maybe lower-performing schools showing the largest increase in proficiency gains. And when we look at communities, we look at like a Natches Elementary School, and the proficiency gains going up nearly 27 points in proficiency level. It's really remarkable, the leadership of Principal Chapin and the community and what everyone has done. And we've seen it in a lot of our collaborative schools. And again, the reason we called it the collaborative is we want to bring like schools with like scenarios together to collaborate, not show heavy-handed accountability, but to collaborate and demonstrate resources and supports, and then identify ways in which we can get better. I also want to not only acknowledge the principals of these schools, but also Dr. Raquel Peltier, an exemplary principal who we had as a high-performing elementary school, who we identified that she would be an asset to, I remember a board meeting where she presented her school, and everybody was saying, "Boy, we need more of that." Well, she indeed has been instrumental in supporting the 18 collaborative schools that we've had throughout the district. So again, not just seeing these growth areas and pockets, but seeing it in the entirety of the school district and very encouragingly amongst some of our previously maybe lower-performing schools. And so just wanted to share that. We'll look at math. There's plenty of work to be done. And I'm always very cautious. Again, I think that it's really good that we get an opportunity to recognize the hard work that has been put in and the progress. And, but there's always lots of work in front of us. But we see that math in elementary school went up. We're now above pre-pandemic levels in math proficiency as a school district in elementary school. And that was nearly a 4 percentage point proficiency gain. And then in middle school, and I'll say this about middle school, I think all of us, when we look there, it makes you kind of stop a little bit. And there's a number of things we're putting in place for our middle schools right now. First of all, it's starting with the recognition that Algebra I in high school is critical for our students. It is one of the most fundamental classes. If kids pass that, we typically see them go on to graduate. But when we see students struggle in algebra, it's often one of the points of disconnection towards graduation. And so what we've done is we have purchased high-quality instructional materials in elementary and middle school for this year. But not only did we purchase them, we also gave those materials to our teachers before the end of last school year. We provided professional learning, trying to take advantage of contingency days. Not always, you're trying to do the very best you can with the hours that you have. But we provided, the academic team provided professional learning around these new math materials so that our teachers are ready for the start of this school year. So we know that we still have plenty of work to do in math. But again, what you can see is plenty of accomplishments. Grades three and four at or above pre-pandemic performance. This has really been a marker in education the past few years, and it has really been tough. We've seen progress, national study after national study, showing progress towards pre-pandemic levels, but not necessarily getting above, back to or above. And what we're seeing here is we're now above pre-pandemic levels in math in elementary school. We're seeing progress in middle school with plenty of work to be done. And, you know, it's always interesting, folks will say, "Well, what's the reason for the progress?" The reasons are many. And it is really, but when you look at many, it's about taking many and getting it aligned and making sure that things are congruent and accessible for teachers. And so we look at investments we've made previously around iReady and the personalized pathways that students are getting access to regardless of wherever their proficiency level is. And so it is a combination of so many things. But I will say, we prioritized three, four things last year with our principals. Climate and culture, you saw progress. Tier-one instruction. This is instruction for all students, students that are not at proficiency level. And so how, when we are instructing on a daily basis, are we making sure they are successful with grade-level materials? And so two of the priority areas, we were really able to make some progress on. And so again, I think the important point to maybe note here, it's the single largest one-year increase in math since SBA began. And as I told our principals, this is humbling. This is something, we all play a part in this. It's about collective leadership. It is about, and I know that this can be sometimes maybe a bit cliche, but it is about keeping the main thing the main thing. And it is so easy to make the main thing not the main thing. And that requires discipline and focus. And so we were able to see some of this progress. And again, this is our teachers, this is our aides, this is our assistants. Last year, when we went out and met with our transportation team, we talked to them about, "You guys are the first people that our kids see in the morning. You get the opportunity to set them up for a positive day. When they leave at the end of the day, you get them set for a nice evening and what have you." And so when we see this type of progress, it is really something that we want to recognize, the entirety of our school district playing a role. So it is difficult to always narrow in on specific reasons, but there are some real important reasons. But I will say that it has been a collective effort of a team that has helped get us to this place. We look at our We look at our EL, our multilingual learners, English language learners. And this is really an encouraging data set that we have recently received. This is about students, and if you kind of read all the fine details, exiting EL services. Now remember, we serve newcomers. Remember, we have over 97 different languages that are spoken in Washoe County School District. And so this is about helping our English learners become, become proficient in language to exit English language services. And this is a really critical marker for our students. I will say that under the leadership of Megan Wa, now an area superintendent, she was instrumental in a vision for what this looked like. And really what this was is taking the mindset of English language learning is not just the responsibility of an English language learning teacher. It is the responsibility of all teachers. And so how can we maximize that? And so it was a model that was put in place where coaches went out to support general education teachers, content teachers at the high school. And previously, what we have shared is that the model was extremely well-received amongst our principals and amongst our teachers. Again, a collective commitment. This is not just about English language teachers. And so we saw tremendous progress. And again, eight percentage point increase in the growth towards proficiency, the primary metric used to evaluate English language learning. And again, you see it across all grade levels. And so it's not just one grade level that went up and everything else stayed flat. We saw it amongst all grade levels. And having watched educational data for many years, sometimes you get this spike, sometimes you get back down, you can see steady progress and then you can see it really had gone up in all grades. Another thing that's really interesting, I think, to share is students in Washoe County School Districts that, that were previously EL, multilingual students, that exit EL services graduated at a higher rate than the average of, of Washoe County School District. And so really a testimony to students that come in, work to acquire a second language and then graduate at higher proficiency levels. I think that's really something that should be known amongst many. And thanks for giving me the opportunity to share all the good news and feel free to jump in and stop wherever you need to. I, this is, this is exciting stuff and it's, it's, it's a privilege to share this information. Academic focus, we really leveraged our Nevada School Performance Framework. At the time, Area Superintendent Anne Gotti went out and worked with every school that he supervised on what does this mean? Not just what is it and what's the final score, just like when we're teaching, it's not the grade, it's the feedback that's given to students that helps them grow. And so it was really being intentional with what is this data saying and how can we use it in more meaningful ways? Science of reading, again, a couple of other things that have been mentioned already. We go up to secondary schools and again, with the leadership of our board, we initiated our phone away, Learn Today. And again, this has been incredible. I want to acknowledge Deputy McMaster and her leadership in this effort. This, this had a lot to it when we were moving forward last year and the ability to mobilize. And what we knew is that lots of schools were already moving in this area, but now we were able to really solidify consistency. Do we have more work to do? Yep, that's the process of education, always more work to do. But we went to a high school yesterday, boy, you just look in all the pouches and all the cell phones, all lined up, students, first day of school, engaged, talking to each other, not distracted. And I will tell you, still, you know, having many teacher friends, myself, they have been very appreciative of this and you've seen the data on this. Then I'll go into just some of the, the data that, that you can see here. Let me go back just for a moment. Dual credit completion. So 70% of our 12th graders participated in one or more advanced courses. And again, I'll, I'll say it to all, when I went to high school, I have had the pleasure of working with my own kids at home and I get to see them when they bring home some of this material. And boy, am I glad they have peers that they can talk to, that understand this information at the levels needed. And so what I mean by that, these are challenging courses, real challenging courses. And so again, we, we know that we're graduating about 50% of our students each year with advanced diplomas. And last year, again, another four percentage point increase in advanced courses from our 12th graders. And then another thing that's kind of interesting, and I'll say this about high school data. First of all, I will let you know that our accountability team is, is the best accountability team, not only in the state, but you will see a recognition here on a national award that was received. They are the best in the country. And their commitment to turning around data is unbelievable. When the data comes in, you will see them out here working way, way late in the evening, trying to get it to schools to make it actionable. And so part of the reason I say that is because I want to make sure that we recognize their exceptional work and support. Remember, our schools use these data systems that they build to, to, to use them in meaningful ways. But a lot of times, high school information is just coming in. In fact, you don't announce overall graduation rates until late November, December, because information is still coming in. And so this is, we've got the Sback data, we've got nice early indicators amongst our, our secondary schools, but all of that data is not necessarily in yet. In fact, we just were over at Hug High School, Proctor-Hug High School on Friday, recognizing some of our summer graduates. And so there is still intense work to support schools. But what we saw is out of our 12th graders, 51% passed an AP or an IB exam or took at least four dual credits. And so really opening up pathways for our students. And again, recognizing that education is about preparing students for workforce development and for the next steps in their life. And so many encouraging signs culminating in really a historical event that we had just a week ago at Debbie Smith CTE Academy, years and years of effort to make this happen. And so we launched nine new CTE programs at Debbie Smith. We expanded CTE programs at AACT, Proctor-Hug, Spanish Springs High School. And so again, not only did we do that, but the other part that I think I'm really excited about is the overall number of internships that we were able to provide. We added a total of 82 new internships. So getting our students out into jobs, getting that experience, working alongside Renown, working along sports medicine, even our own school police program. So these internships being a pretty critical piece. So again, lots of encouragement, all the way from elementary up through high school. And then wanted to kind of take a, a, a couple of moments to really recognize some important work that occurred during the legislative session. As a board, you were all committed to working to get a highly qualified personnel in all areas of education in our buildings as quickly as possible. We know that there are a lot of folks going into retirement, but we also know that there are a lot of barriers for people wanting to come into our system. And so how do we make this great profession easier to get into by just knocking out some of those simple barriers? And I will tell you that there was a lot of people that were involved in doing that. But very critically was the work of our last year new Chief Human Resource Officer Doug Owen. He worked with the Nevada Department of Education. He worked with our Legislative Affairs Team. He worked constantly to knock down barriers to get us more highly qualified personnel. And it wasn't always an easy task and that was a lot of foresight and a lot of vision for somebody coming in, brand new to education, coming in and recognizing how critical that is. And so there was that success. I also want to take a moment to recognize a special guest that's with us today. And that is Assembly Member Golding, who is here and was willing to take on and champion something that has been really near and dear to many educators in our school district for many years. And that was what we call double testing kindergarten through third grade students. Now remind you, kindergarteners are five years old. And so this was about eliminating double testing, which really we saw no need to have to make them take a MAP assessment and then an assessment that really measured exactly the same things, an iReady assessment, and take both of them because of pieces that were in place. This was a lot of hard work. I also want to acknowledge the work of our Legislative Affairs, Dylan Shaver, a very, his political acumen and ability to skillfully weave pieces together for the benefit of education, not only for Washoe County School District, but really for our state. This was a really great step forward. And I would very much be remiss if I didn't acknowledge Interim Superintendent Dr. Canavaro. He has been instrumental in mobilizing this effort, so much that he was even open to our Director of Accountability, Research and Evaluation, Dr. Laura Davidson, inviting her to the Nevada Department of Education Board Meeting to present a study on comparability, because without that, they wouldn't have been able to move forward. And having the leadership and the recognition that this is all about doing right for kids. And so between the three, between Assembly Member Golding, Dylan Shaver, and Dr. Laura Davidson, this is a real win for our five to nine-year-old students.
This is incredible. So just so everyone has an idea, and I certainly didn't have an idea prior to coming into this role, getting any bill through the legislature and having it signed into law is no small feat. And somehow, the Washoe County School District was able, with the work of many, to accomplish two important goals, with both of those original intents making their way into law. And what I am so proud about with this is that these are not just bills to help Washoe County. This is how we elevate education for the entire state of Nevada. And as Superintendent Ernst just rightly pointed out, reducing bureaucracy with bringing people into our districts as workers and then also not double testing our youngest learners. That is a huge accomplishment. I had a third grader last year and he was tested three times, maps, iReady, and Sback. This is a huge accomplishment, not just for our children, but for children across the state. And so on that note, we can thank a person sitting in this room, and I would like her to come up and be recognized because she was a freshman Assembly Member who receives a fewer number of bills. So for those who don't know, for your first term, you receive a fewer number of what they call bill draft requests. And yet, Assembly Member Golding knew it was incredibly important for her to have one of those be dedicated to something improving education in the state of Nevada. And so Assembly Member Heather Golding, will you please talk to us about why this was so important to you and what this means to be able to reclaim instructional time for our kids with only the correct amount of testing that they need?
Thank you so much. It was such a pleasure and opportunity to work with the team, as you have been talking about here today. You know, during those little videos, I didn't hear any of the students saying, gosh, I'm really looking forward to the beginning of the school year so I can do some testing. So you have, you have a fantastic government affairs team that if it weren't for Dylan and your team, the bill wouldn't have gone through. It was a very creative process for getting that through. It didn't start, it didn't end with the same bill number that it started with. So there was a lot of strategy involved and it was just truly my privilege to just have my name, to be able to offer a bill draft request for doing such good work. I think that one of the strategies for a freshman is to, to pick something narrow, but something narrow doesn't mean that it's not impactful. So when we talked to Superintendent Canavaro, we said very specifically, the goal here is to reduce the number of hours that kids are testing. So this is about being able to tell our neighbors, the parents and the kids that are right here in our community, less time in testing. So he really heard that and it was really, he's a fantastic partner in this. So thank you for the acknowledgement. This was just like all of it you're doing here, it's a team effort, 100%. There were a lot of people involved. So thank you to everybody else that was involved with that.
Thank you so much as well, Assembly Member, because we, we understand we have to have testing, there should be testing, but there should not be too much testing. And thanks to you, the children in Nevada will not have to face that anymore. So thank you so much. Would you mind if our board rises and takes a photo with you to celebrate this moment?
Can we ask Mr. Shaver to join us as well?
Absolutely.
Perfect, thank you.
And Dr. Davidson.
All right, and now down to the, to the home stretch here. Just a couple more things to maybe share that are well worth acknowledging. Again, you saw that there was legislation around school of choice, and really, our regulation that was established over the past couple of years is serving as a model for other districts around Assembly Bill 533. And so, school of choice, remember what's really neat is that approximately 91% of our families that want to go to another school, that they maybe fits their needs a bit better, receive their first or second choice. 95% receive their first, second, or third choice. But it is, it is quite a process, and last year, we were able to automate it in different ways. The last thing I'll say is this, we had a really nice compliment that was paid to Washoe County School District recently amongst the Nevada Superintendents. And it kind of went along these lines. It was, it was, "If Washoe County School District thinks that this is something we should move forward on, we want to move forward on it." And I think that that is really a, a pretty strong testimony. And then I will say, there are so many out there that, you know, have been leaned on for years around becoming content experts and sharing information. Dr. Lamarcus out in the audience, Chief Mathers was here. I can name every leadership team member that we have, spending countless hours trying to provide the correct information to guide really important legislative decisions. And this is a leadership team, I've got Chief Rimbardo up here as well, his whole team, always willing to put in countless hours to try to become a, a really good reasoned voice amongst the legislators, so that they, they have information that they can make good choices from. And so it's really nice to be acknowledged as a, as a real leader in the state in terms of legislative efforts. Again, I was just talking real briefly, we, we had prestigious recognition for the Council of Great City Schools. Again, as a reminder, we are really from a student enrollment side of things, we are in the top 60 largest school districts in the country. From a geographic standpoint, we do, we're a lot more than even that. And so it is, we belong to, and this was their highest award for informing progress in urban education, the top research award for groundbreaking early warning system to identify students at risk for graduating. And you can see there, Dr. J.T. Stark, who works in our Accountability Department. And the one thing that you'll see, not only is he brilliant, but when our schools need something, he turns around and makes it for them and provides it, because again, we do genuinely want to make sure we're supporting schools in a timely manner. So we've got that. Our, our teacher home visits is nationally recognized by Attendance Works, and then Nevada School Board Association for Innovative Technology Integration. And so a lot of really positive things last year. We'll continue to get more information. We'll be sharing this information at future board meetings in September or October, but we'll continue to bring forward this information. But it's really a, a, a nice opportunity to just gather, kind of pause, and gather ourselves going forward, with the headlines being, "Improving Academic Outcomes for All." We had the single-largest increase in S-Back proficiency levels in WCSD history. All elementary grades in both ELA and math proficiency now, levels now at or above, within one point of pre-pandemic academic levels. Again, the one that really, really I'm proud of, the entirety of the team, every student population showed proficiency level improvement. And so in all grade levels, we decreased chronic absenteeism to 71% of our, our schools improved. And then again, you can see 95% of families received their top-three school selections. And so, a lot for us to be proud of as a, as a school district in terms of progress that is made. And, you know, we kind of always culminate with these graduations that just occurred a couple of months back now, and that's really a North Star for us. And so it was a really encouraging year. I want to thank our board for your leadership. I want to thank our leadership team for your commitment, your dedication, your leadership, your professionalism. I want to thank teachers, associations that I see out in the audience, for just really focusing in to help improve student outcomes. So with that, I think I'll conclude the presentation, and thanks for letting me have a little extra time to, to share this this afternoon.
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, just a comment, wow, this is absolutely amazing. Joe, sorry, Superintendent Ernst, you know what I'd like to say, and I'm only one of seven, but if it wasn't the first week of school, I'd tell you to take the rest of the week off. But, but this is truly, really remarkable, and I'm, I'm honored and really pleased to be part of this body, and it is a real testament to your leadership, Superintendent Ernst, truly. I know you've given a lot of credit to your staff, as they, as they deserve it. Dr. Stark is amazing, by the way, with the work that he's doing to sort of forecast, you know, trouble ahead. All the numbers are moving up. I, I hope that our team, through you, can share this far and wide in this time where we have, you know, narratives that want to tear down public education. I think there's a real golden opportunity here to ensure that this community, this county, this state understands the progress we have made under your leadership, under the work that we have done together. Truly, truly proud of it, and I, I want you to know that. It's truly an honor to, to have you at the helm. But let's not rest. Let's not, let's, let's have the same presentation a year from today, and let's see those numbers be even better. I think we can do that. So, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Vice President Mayberry, and concur fully, and we're going to keep pushing forward.
Thank you. I, again, I too want to say thank you so very, very much. And I'm so proud to be on this board and to be part of Washoe County School District, because we are truly leading. We're setting, setting the pace, setting the example, leading with integrity and commitment. And why not Washoe County School District? We, we've got the brightest and the best. We have a wonderful, fantastic, phenomenal superintendent, a wonderful team, amazing teachers, amazing administrators, amazing police force. We, we are the shining star, and we just need to shine brighter, and I know we can. And it's all for the most important thing, and that's, that's for our kids. And I know, I know, we, we're just on the rise. And speaking of rise, I think it's important to say with HUG High School, at HUG High School, with the summer graduations, we don't give up. We don't give up on our kids. We don't give up on anybody. We have Rise Academy situated now at Debbie Smith CTE. We're not going to give up on anybody who wants to fulfill their dream. And we're, we're gonna, we're gonna lead, and we'll lead with integrity. Thank you.
It's, it's truly remarkable, and I want to thank the Superintendent for such a data-driven presentation that show unequivocally what the performance numbers have been. This past year has been historic for so many reasons, and I think the best possible way any Superintendent could be starting year two. I mentioned it before when we were talking about the behaviors, about the Behavior Manual, and I want to revisit that, because this is about making the investment into education. There are some reasons why this happened, in addition to, of course, the truth of our talented Superintendent and the executive leadership team. And this is also the answer to the question of, well, what did the districts do with that increased funding from the 2023 legislative session? This is the beginning of that answer. That money was allocated on July 1st of that year. We needed time to implement the programs, we spoke with the community, we listened to staff, we developed programs, we hired new staff, we grew opportunities, and now we are beginning to see the results of that investment from that legislative session. And to me, this is also proof about why it is so important to have high-quality professional educators in our classrooms. These numbers and this work does not happen without the value of our teachers doing this work every day, in partnership with the education support professionals and all the people across the district, from the bus driver who picks that child up, to the nutrition worker that feeds them, to the educators that work with them, our reading interventionists, you name it. That is the success that we're seeing here. So thank you so much to every single person on our team for what you've done to advocate, not just for funding, but for also making our district better. So this is a huge thank you to our educators, our team, and certainly our Superintendent. Congratulations. All right, seeing no other lights on, we will say congratulations and thank you for this. This now closes Item 3.02, and we will go ahead and take a break now at this point. So we'll go ahead and take about a 15-minute break. I will also call attention to my colleagues that for the next item, Item 3.03, we got some public comment immediately before this meeting, so this would also be a good opportunity to actually read through that before we come back from our break and then take that item up. So it is now 3:50 PM, and we will take a short recess. So uh, it is now three fifty P M. And we will take a short recess.
It is four fifteen sixteen P M. On this Tuesday, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-five. And I would like to call back to order this regular meeting of the Wausau County School District Board of Trustees. Right before the break, we just closed item three point zero two, and we open now with item three point zero three. The presentation and possible action to provide preliminary approval for the amendment of Board Policy forty-five hundred, district employee's speech, and initiation of the thirteen day public review and comment period. This is an item for possible action. And we welcome with us today our chief general counsel Neil Rimbardo and our general counsel Kevin Pick. Thank you so much for being with us again today.
Thank you, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, trustees. Good afternoon. Uh, we're here today on Board Policy forty-five hundred. Um, so we took a lot of what you shared with us last week, our last meeting, I guess, and tried to incorporate it into this new version, all the things you asked for. So let me just go through it quickly. Um, first, our purpose statement talks about what we stand for, which I know is important to President Smith. We stand for supporting constitutionally guaranteed rights. Uh, we also um, talked about uh, putting or placing as opposed to imposing limits. Uh, trustee Nicolet pointed that out. So we added that in. We also pursuant to the request of trustee Westlake did this on red line versions with the old policy. And uh, I know she did not like that. We didn't do that last time, so we did that as well this time. So we tried to meet most of the uh, the issues that were raised. Then what we decided to do was take a look at the policy.
All right, folks. Here we go. It is four fifteen sixteen P M. On this Tuesday, August twelfth, two thousand twenty five, and I would like to call back to order. This regular meeting of the Washoe County School District Board of Trustees. Right before the break, we just closed item three point zero two, and we open now with item three point zero three. The presentation and possible action to provide preliminary approval for the amendment of board policy forty five hundred district employee's speech. And initiation of the thirteen day public review and comment period. This is an item for possible action. And we welcome with us today our chief general counsel Neil Rimbardo and our general counsel Kevin Pick. Thank you so much for being with us again today.
Thank you, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, trustees. Good afternoon. We're here today on board policy forty five hundred. So we took a lot of what you shared with us last week, our last meeting, I guess, and tried to incorporate it into this new version, all the things you asked for. So let me just go through it quickly. First, our purpose statement talks about what we stand for, which I know is important to President Smith. We stand for supporting constitutionally guaranteed rights. We also talked about putting or placing as opposed to imposing limits. Trustee Nicolette pointed that out, so we added that in. We also pursuant to the request of trustee Westlake. Did this on red line versions with the old policy, and I know she did not like that. We didn't do that last time, so we did that as well this time. So we tried to meet most of the issues that were raised. Then what we decided to do was take a look at the policy and start with the generalization of the law, which is that. If you're speaking as a private person on a matter of public concern, it's it's for the most part protected. There are cases that erode that away. This is a very, very specific, very, very constitutional law based issue. I know that last time there was some discussion on whether or not the First Amendment changes. The First Amendment changes all the time. Every year, the Supreme Court considers the First Amendment, and that means every year we have to look at the First Amendment and its analysis. So what we did is we started with generalizations, and that's paragraph one and 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 two. And then what we did in paragraph three is we tried to address, or we didn't try to address, we did address specific areas. That you see oftentimes in school districts, things related to curriculum. We have issues related to violence, harassment. Discriminatory speech, political activity, speech related to curriculum. These are things, I'm not going to go through them all. You can read them for yourself. These are things that we see all the time in public employment and especially related to the school district. So we thought what we'll do is start with some nice generalizations with paragraphs one and two, and I'd be happy to answer questions. I know you've read them for yourself. I don't know if they're specific questions. But we started with the generalizations and then got more specific with the regulation language. So going back to our. What how we look at our policies, it's what we're doing, and so this is what we're doing. And then the how will be the regulation. So we feel that this met everything that you brought forward to us, and you know, I want to thank the board and recognize that, hey, we heard your concerns, and we think this is even better than it was before. We liked the last one, but we think this is even better, and so we're confident that this is consistent with all Supreme Court cases. I know that there was a Supreme Court case raised in the public comment. I explained to you why this is consistent with that Supreme Court case. And so we are very, very comfortable with this. We did, I did read another public comment about, well, how do we know what this means? How do we know what that means? It's all based on case by case basis. The Supreme Court has talked about the First Amendment. You analyze every single case on a case by case basis. And I think it's really important to be very, very careful that trying to legislate every single possible event is a mistake, and that's what the old forty five hundred does. And and so we need to get away from that. That's bad draftsmanship, and so we're very, very pleased with the way that this one came out. And I know Kevin just has a few things that he'd like to add, and then if you have any questions, let us know.
Hi, everyone. It's General Counsel Kevin Pick, President Smith, Superintendent Ernst, trustees. Chief General Counsel Rimbardo really covered everything I was really planning to talk about, but the general provision in here is taken right from the Pickering Conic test. It's the same test applied to all public sector employees when free speech comes up in their employment context. And then then from there, the specific kind of A R directions to draft A Rs really are more for very specific circumstances. And it would be almost impossible to encompass every subset of First Amendment law in a board policy. Really, at that point, it would cease to become a board policy. It would just become a legal treatise at that point, and it wouldn't really be consistent with the board's other policies on what creates a board policy and what is a board policy. And so as Chief General Counsel, you know, Rimbardo was saying, that I think this kind of hits the right tone between being good guidance for employees and for the board. But at the same time, not being a legal treatise with analyzing very specific circumstances. So, thank you.
And if I may just, I'm sorry, I know that I said I that you guys ask questions, but I do want to point out again, the old policy has mistakes in it. It needs to be fixed, so we got to figure it out, you know, at some point. And the second thing that I'll add is I don't leak out myself in the mirror.
Thank you. Okay, so I think where where I'm struggling with, I really like this update, and I really appreciate you, you know, getting closer to where where we need to be. In paragraph two, it specifically says that the speech is not protected, and I think the one line I'm having some concerns with is B. If the employee identifies as a district employee while engaging in speech, employees are not speaking in an individual or private capacity. And if if you if you follow that line, it's saying that, no, if you identify, you are not protected. But my understanding after reading quite a bit about the Pickering Conic test is that if it is, if it is a matter of public concern, then it may be protected still. So, for example, our teachers who went to the legislature and shared that they, you know, about school funding, they they said, I'm an employee, I'm a teacher. That that still would be considered protected according to my understanding of Pickering Conic. I did not go to law school, but I do really like reading legal stuff. So I think B is where I have my biggest concern, and I would not feel comfortable approving this as is. Because B is basically, if if I read this as still a district employee, I would say I am not allowed to ever identify that I am a district employee. If I wanted to come and speak to the board about a concern, if I wanted to go to the legislature, if I wanted to write a letter to the editor, to the R G J. And that may not have been the intention, but that's that's how I'm reading just B is my concern. So I would ask that we have, we we somehow clarify that if it is a matter of public concern, not a job issue, not a grievance. But a matter of public concern like school funding, curriculum, anything like that, that that could still be protected. And I know that that is really variant depending on the situation, and I do get that, but B is is my area of concern. Because this to me really says, we're not encouraging our employees to, we have a thunderstorm warning. So B is is just, it feels like we're we're telling employees that we don't want them to advocate on the behalf of public education. That that's where it makes me feel. So that's my concern.
Thank you for that. I just want to clarify, there's really two parts of the Pickering Conic test. You've identified the first part.
Yes.
We haven't talked about the second part. It has to be in a matter of public concern, which you've identified, and you have to do it in a private capacity. So that's the second part. If you were, you know, called to testify in a open court, it no longer is, it's. It's a different capacity in which you are doing it. It's in a public capacity at that point, and so, or if you're testifying before the legislature. And so I appreciate what you're saying, but we're only, your analysis only focuses on the first part of the Pickering Conic test. It doesn't focus on the second.
Right.
So to his point, you have to have both parts. So that's what you look at to determine. So I think what we, the diff, the difference here would be if somebody goes down and advocates about student funding, as you pointed out, and. They say, well, I'm a teacher. Okay, that's not a problem, but if they say, I'm here speaking on behalf of the Washington County School District, that's a problem. So I think those are the different things that you have to look at here. So that's why it's, again, we're broad in the policy, which is the way it's supposed to be. And then you get to the case by case examples and regulations and things of that nature. So this is, this is, this is specific and consistent with the Constitution, frankly, or how the Supreme Court interprets it.
So you kind of alluded to what I was looking at or listening for was a general in scope. Okay, got two part. You have your, you have a general public interpretation, you have a legal attorney interpretation. But you went and talked about how you're going to have it spelled out in regulation, so maybe a little more simpler in understanding for the audience. So that, you know, it's really spelled out for you. I I'm only just alluding to that just because I know you had mentioned it, and I just wanted to make sure that it's differentiated with policy versus the regulation.
Well, we could definitely do that in the employee political activity section of the regulation, which is three C. So give more details than that.
So everyone's going to have the opportunity to talk while we work this through. Let's stay on B while while we're on it. Vice President Mayberry, trustee Westlake, is there anything you wanted to say on B? Because I do, so I want to make sure we guide the conversation, but we follow the lead of who was talking earlier. Does anyone want to say something about B in particular?
Thank you. Thank you, President Smith. So first of all, this, I lot so much better. But I I did write down to be myself, to be.
Or not to be.
To be or not to be. I just, I feel like it's geared more to punitive. I I don't, that's just my take. If an employee identifies as a district employee while engaging in speech, employees are not speaking in an individual or private capacity. But we all know when we're speaking to people, usually it comes up as a point of reference when you're talking to someone, so they know where you're coming from. That, oh, I'm a trustee in the Washoe County School District. Oh, I'm a teacher at Mendive Middle School. If you're talking about something, and I just, I think that could get to be very restrictive and punitive. And I mean, if it was me, I'd almost feel like Big Brother's watching over me at what I'm saying and who I'm saying it to. And, oh, my gosh, did I, you know, put my reference, my my work, you know, I just, I don't know. I just think it comes up a lot in conversation, and I just think now we're kind of nitpicking on how people identify themselves. Because usually it's, a lot of the times it's through your your work. So that's why I just, I had an issue with, I've got a few others, but we're only to be, so, thank you.
Yeah, I'll try to be brief and respectfully, I mean, I don't, I don't see any punitive language in there. That's that's just where I'm coming from. I guess my question is more rudimentary. I mean, a few months ago, we had a lot of staff from a particular elementary school that came here, stood behind that same podium, had some concerns in the workplace. I mean, none of, this wouldn't prevent them from continuing to do that, right? That's the bottom line. I mean, they can still come, provide public comment in their capacity as a teacher. I mean, that is still their official capacity. I get this, right? I mean, there's, there's no obstacles.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Jump in. So I I really don't mind the first part of two, but to be is also something. So when I look at policy, and again, having done non-legal policy work from the corporate setting. The goal is for somebody, anybody, an employee, a community member, to pull up a policy, and the average person should have a clear idea approximately of what's okay, what's not, and where to go if they have questions. It should, it should make sense. B may very well have applicability now that I'm hearing the explanation for this, but it doesn't read that way. So one of the things I'll be hoping for in in another version is clarifying that. So if I understand that the reading of this does mean that an employee could, let's say, go to a rally and identify themselves, you know, as I'm a second grade teacher at Anderson Elementary. That B doesn't read that way to me, and if this is supposed to be our policy, I think we should be able to understand it. And in that it doesn't read that way. So now that I understand your intent, that makes sense to me. But I think that this needs to be rewritten so that it's more clear, because I read it exactly the way that it is, and that is. If an employee identifies as a district employee while engaging in speech, employees are not speaking in an individual or private capacity. That feels very clear to me, but in in the other direction, saying you can't do it. So I I would like to see that section spelled out more to clarify what they are or are not allowed to do. Because I don't think that anytime when a district employee simply acknowledges that they're an employee of the district, their speech is, you know, no longer protected. So if that's what that means, I think we need to revise that section, and that's just, you know, something that I wanted to suggest. Because if this is supposed to be a policy that we understand, it doesn't, I mean, from those of us who have spoken based on the questions, it doesn't appear to read that way.
Well, I would just posit back that, what type of rally? So are you okay with a second grade teacher getting up at a rally that's pro Nazism? I mean, that's the point. And that's where you got to be careful. So I just, if it's a pro-union rally, that's a different right. So if that's what you're referring to, that doesn't, that's not what this is about. And again, this is, you're taking case law from the United States Supreme Court and try to, really, we probably should have never had a policy on this in the first place. But we let that cat out of the bag, so we're trying to fix it. So the other option is just delete forty five hundred altogether, and we'd be great with that. But I don't think that's the appetite of the board, so we're trying to balance, you have probably fifteen to twenty cases compacted into this little area. And again, like General Counsel Pick said, we can write you a treatise, which is what this policy is, and it's wrong. Or we can give you the highlights and then draft a regulation that clarifies this. But I think you, I think this, that's exactly what you're talking about. So the case that this relies on is actually a school district case, and I can't remember the name of it. But it was, it was, what was she doing? It was a teacher who was. She might have been working at a gentleman's club, if I recall the facts correctly, and but also held herself out as a third grade teacher on social media. And said that she was a teacher, and parents obviously were upset about that, that combination of things. So, you know, I think you got to be careful. You're looking at the, just the side of, well, geez, they can't go talk at the legislature, which they probably can, depending on the circumstances. But there's other reasons to have this in there. That's not just the legislature or political activity, and again, the regulation allows us to. To to manage those situations. So. But anyway, I I would just point out, depends on the rally, I would be very, very careful about when people are speaking in their private capacity.
Yeah, I agree. For what it's worth, I didn't actually, I'm not referring to any case law. So I realized last time on July twenty ninth, four of us said we need more and didn't really give you, I mean, we talked, but it's not like we gave a lot of direction. So the homework I did over this time was actually look at employee's speech policies at other educational institutions like Washington State and Iowa University. Not because I love their policies overall, but I wanted to see how others handle this topic. And particularly related to that, I noticed that in their policies, and and this is prevalent online, that it actually gave like examples. That was just a little bit more that clarified that when somebody was speaking in public or online, they have to clarify, you know, that they're not official spokespersons, things like that. That they were still able to speak. They just have to make sure that they're not presenting themselves. So I'm not suggesting that we have a legal treaties. I'm just suggesting that the way that this is written needs a little more clarification. Like something as simple as, like, a lot of them had this, you know, and it's, it's not a blanket disclaimer, but it was a suggestion like that expressing that the views expressed are their own, and they don't represent the views of W C S D. So I'm not talking about blowing it up, but I am saying that a little more clarification would be helpful. But I didn't actually look up any case law. I was looking at how other entities do it and and try to balance that. And you're right, quite a few educational institutions don't have any of these policies online, so it wasn't super easy to find examples of this. But I just wanted to clarify that I'm not trying to personally parse through law because I'm not a lawyer. But I do believe that an employee should be able to go to this policy and reasonably read it at face value. And to be on face value alone feels like they can't identify, you know, themselves. So that's, that's just a little bit of a clarification on not getting into the case law of it.
I'll just be very careful citing the universities. It's a completely different standard as it is for public education. You have tenured teachers, tenured professors. They're completely different types of employees, so I wouldn't, I would not hitch my wagon to that star. However, I know that there are jurisdictions that write quite lengthy policies. We've chosen a different path here at the district. We all agreed we were going to take a diet, and so we've been following Arizona, and Arizona was more like our first one, so now we're kind of in between the two.
Yeah. Okay, I I think I just need a little clarification. So, and and maybe this. So, and, and maybe this is where, where I'm struggling with the language, and maybe it's actually in the, the initial part of two. So what two is really trying to allude to is if somebody is speaking on, as a district employee, meaning on behalf of the district, that's what's, then what, they can't just say whatever they want. I, I don't know if that's really quite the clarification, but I think that's the difference between someone like the, the teachers who came here from the elementary school and said, I happen to be a teacher, but here is how this made me feel personally. They were really speaking as an individual, they were just identifying where they worked versus I'm speaking on behalf of such and such elementary school. Is that the, is that the difference between the two with the, with the two-prong test? Does that make sense? I'm sorry, Kevin, if that doesn't make sense.
No, it doesn't, it absolutely makes sense. And the forum in which the speech is done, this is why it's so complicated. The forum in which the speech is done has an impact on whether it's protected or not. And that brings in even other case law on top of it.
Right.
This section B, two B, is essentially a boiled down version of a generation of cases. And it uses words like identify as a public employee, identify as. Those are words that we didn't just come up with, those are court words that are used in cases. And so what we're trying to do here is exactly what you asked for. We're trying to boil down a generation, dozens of cases from across the Ninth Circuit and the U.S. Supreme Court to fit within this. And so it's one of those things that the, the more, the more definite and the more easily readable you get, it's, you're trying to summarize dozens and dozens of cases. And you end up, the more succinct you be or are trying to be, the less succinct you actually are. And, and so, yes, so I think, to answer your question, the forum matters because that goes into different issues.
Right.
And, and then, yes, so if someone comes up and they're speaking individually on a matter of public concern, it will be protected. I just wanna point out too, this is, this is not a prohibition on anything. These are not intended to be prohibitions. This is when speech is either protected under the law or not from regulations. This isn't the district will regulate something. This is a summary of what the law, First Amendment law, allows to be regulated. This isn't a promise that it will be regulated.
So, that's a great point. So what, what Kevin is saying there is, we're just saying, under the First Amendment, it's not protected. But the regulations will lay out what we're looking at, like, such as hate speech, social media accounts, be careful with that, you know? That's why we have all those, it's not up there right now, but three A through whatever.
Right, 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 yeah. Yeah, I still, I, I still feel like two feels a little problematic in that, that the everyday person reading it, it, it does make it, B still makes it seem as though anytime someone identifies themselves that they're, and, and I understand where, where two, the, the main paragraph is saying, if you're speaking on behalf of the district, that's when you just can't say anything. That could be really a very problematic, I understand that. But I think, I think that's where I, I'm just really struggling, that, that the everyday person looking at this is not going to feel empowered to advocate for, you know, all of the things that we, we encourage teachers and administrators and staff to come and share with us, to, to share at the legislature. And, and I agree, we don't wanna make it so broad that they're going to, you know, act in hate speech or anything like that. So there, there's a fine balance, and I understand that. And I, I really appreciate you guys working within legal language as best as possible to make it sound like something that everyday people can read. But I, I still, B just feels really problematic to me, and I still have some concerns about where, where that's landing right now.
Okay, uh, thank you, President Smith. So I still, B is problematic for me also because I, and I do appreciate it because I asked for this to fall under what the law and all of that. But I think it's gonna be confusing and it may gag some input that we receive from our teachers. And I think that's, we increased seventeen percent of employees willing to take the climate and culture survey and feeling good about the climate and culture. And I just think we need to be careful in how we represent what we're allowing and how we're allowing it. And, and I appreciate the, the Nazi, having a Nazi rally, but I think that would be covered under violent harassing and discriminatory employee speech. I mean, I think, I think we can line out what would just be like, oh, my gosh, we, we can't have that. But when we say that, and getting back to my, I know we're supposed to just be doing two B, but two C, I think is when the punitive comes in, when employee speech directly relates to his or her job or job duties. The speech is generally not protected speech under the First Amendment because specific issues, concerns, or complaints regarding employment are not considered matters of public concern. I think it's a board concern now. I think we need to know, you know, we have to hear what's going out there, going on out there in our school communities so that you first have to be aware. And then you, you get an agenda item to, to talk about and see how things can be made better. And I don't know, I haven't really seen it abused that much by just onesies and twosies of teachers coming in and just complaining about their job. It's usually a vast population of teachers that they feel that, hey, we, we need to bring this to your attention because we don't feel that this is right. And usually if it's happening in this area, it might be happening in that. We're not doing a lot of things wrong, but if we cut off that venue for teachers to be able to come and talk to us, how, how are we gonna improve the climate? We, we can't, because it's like, don't, we don't wanna hear anything bad, don't, don't come and say anything bad.
Okay, okay, with all due respect, y'all are misinterpreting what this is saying. That doesn't say that. What that says is it's not protected First Amendment speech. That's all it says. Doesn't mean you can't say it, doesn't mean anything. Alls it says is it's not protected First Amendment speech. And then the decision is made on a case-by-case basis whether or not it exceeds some policy in the district, for example, or is hate speech, or is inappropriate political activity, which is all the things in the regulation. It doesn't say that you can't come here. In fact, that is protected speech because it would be a whistleblower. So it doesn't say, the example you gave. So it doesn't say that. And, and it doesn't prohibit speech. What it says is it's not protected by the First Amendment. Those are two significantly different things. I don't know how much I can stress that. I, I feel like.
No, I get it, I get it, but I, wasn't whistleblower crossed out? Wasn't the whole section on whistleblower crossed out?
Well, we don't need a section down below on whistleblower because again, that policy is a treatise, and that's really whistleblowers fall under state law. The problem with the old policy is it constantly references things that we have to do anyway. So what do you need a policy for if you have to do it anyway? So, and, and, and actually frankly, cites it incorrectly for a lot of it.
I gotta be honest, I kinda wonder if you're onto something about whether or not we need this, if I'm being honest.
I was thinking.
So, hearing you explain it makes more sense. And so what I wish I could see was a policy that captures a little more of what it is you mean, which is why, okay, so what does that mean? In our last meeting, we just said, hey, give you more. This time I knew we had to come with more concrete ideas. Sometimes, and I like that we limit them, we don't have too many definitions, and we shouldn't. But I, I had to look up, what is public concern that has a real meaning? So we, we reference public concern here, but we don't really define it. So I was going to ask if there could be a space for limited but necessary definitions, and we have those in the new policies, when and where we need them. But some of the, the words, and then I think, again, because policies are, were one, our board should understand exactly what this means. But the average person should be able to go to the policy. And so I wondered if definitions, and I'm just throwing some of these out there that I saw, like on public concern would be helpful, what an individual in private capacity is. Understanding what public concern qualifies for and what that is would be really helpful. And particularly hearing you explain what B and C mean to you, can you write that? Because what you're saying very much makes sense to me, but the way that it's written doesn't seem to match up that way. But I like the way that you're describing it. But I'll also say, I am very open to whether or not we even need this policy, quite frankly. And I'll just kind of leave it at, at that. And, I mean, just for now, we obviously have some public comment, and we'll wanna hear from them. But I'm totally fine with two and two A, but B and C are problematic to me. And I also noticed that, and, and again, not just in the universities, but in other employee's speech policies, almost all of them, at least somewhere in the policy itself, acknowledged certain speech around, hold on, for example, unionizing, workplace safety, wages, collective bargaining. The policies that I read online didn't define them, but just carved out any acknowledgement whatsoever about those things in the policy. And I notice ours, you know, doesn't have it. But I'll mention again that I'm not opposed to whether or not we even need to have this, depending on how far down the rabbit hole goes. But my litmus test is, can the average person pick this policy up and understand it without having two incredibly talented lawyers sitting in front of them going, no, 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 that's not what it means, let me explain it. Because everything you're saying really makes sense to me, but it's just not how I read what we have in the policy now. So anyways, I don't know your thoughts about adding some definitions. You may also, based on this conversation, agree that there could be some definition because I, as the average person, would need to know, you know, what does that, what does that mean? Some people wouldn't have it. And again, it was also common to see those definitions in some of the other policies that I read.
The third, I have two, public concern, individual and private capacity. What was your third proposed definition?
Um, it was around confidentiality and the way that that relates to public education, like things like, like medical information, academic information. It was just spelled out pretty plainly. And it wasn't like big, full, long definitions, it was just brief points about them. And then most of them also just on face value briefly listed out things like unionizing, workplace safety, wages, collective bargaining, whistleblowing activities, things like that. Like the policy just referenced it. So when someone reads it, they go, oh, okay, I understand that I'm still allowed to say this. So that's just a suggestion that I wanted to bring. I see lights on over here. I'll let you decide who wants to go.
No, thanks. Uh, yes, so on B here, two B, if an employee identifies as a district employee while engaging in speech, comma, employees are not speaking in their official capacity. Is that synonymous with the individual or private capacity in their official capacity?
Well, if I say I'm speaking as a district employee, then I'm not speaking as an individual or in my private capacity because I'm speaking as a district employee. And again, it doesn't prohibit speech. What it says is it's not protected speech. So it's two different things. And I think to Kevin's point of view, I hope you don't mind me not using titles, it just seems easier, we all know each other pretty well, is, is it's a forum base. It depends on where you're doing it and how you're doing it. If you walk in here and you're talking to the Board of Trustees or you go to the legislature, that's a lot different than going to somewhere where it would be untoward towards the district, the employer, to be there. Maybe it's an anti-public education rally. Okay, let's get away from the hate speech because somebody said that's easy. Well, we know people are against public education out there. Would we want one of our teachers to be there? I would suggest that that probably isn't appropriate. And then if they got up and said, I'm a teacher of the Washoe County School District, and you shouldn't support public education because they're terrible. Now, do you guys wanna apply two B?
What, what would be the, the downside of just scrapping 4500 altogether? In your, in your legal estimation?
I hadn't thought about that much. I know that some districts don't have it, I just presumed we were gonna do it. We did talk about it a little this morning. What are your thoughts, Kevin?
And that's not a critical question, by the way, it's not a tiny, big criticism.
This area, since it is dealing so much with a legal issue, it's difficult. Because, I mean, it's like having a policy on UCERA or the ADA. The policy should be, we will follow the ADA, we will follow UCERA. This is no different than this. The policy really should be, we will follow the First Amendment. And so, but what ends up happening is you try to have specific guidance in here based on legal precedent, and because of what you're trying to summarize, it naturally becomes complicated, overly complicated in some areas. So those are my general thoughts on it.
I, I will add to what Kevin's saying too, which is, you know, we're worried about our employees. And I get that, okay, you guys don't like two A, B, or B and C, or, and that, you know, everyone has their opinions. We're just trying to capture the case law, but I do think it's a little unfair to the employee to not have a regulation that points out some of the specifics that we talk about. JJ, could you move that up in three? Which is, you know, and, and I was thinking, I took a note off of what President Smith said, is maybe we put CBA in there just to make it clear. But NRS 288 already tells us, we can't prohibit that speech. So that's, you know, those are those things. But if you want employee guidance, you have to have a policy to have a regulation. We can't go back to just dropping regulations, not attaching to policies. That was the old way. I'm, I'm hell-bent on fixing this before I hit the road. So however we do it, let's do it.
Thank you. This is really good discussion, and I think it's, it, it's a fine example of, of how this is so complicated. And it is, as it should be, it should be very complicated. This is precisely why I did not want to tread into these weeds. I wanted to keep the original that we read last time and not try and give it more. It's a policy, it's a thirty thousand, fifty thousand foot view, as it should be. And it should not, it should not outline all the nuances. That's up to our superintendent and the regulations and his experts. And that will take quite some doing because this is so very complicated. So I think we could beat this up for a very long time, kind of like as long as the First Amendment has been around. And, and I do believe we need a policy, but I believe that we have a, a one-pager, and we stick to that and not try and explain things. Because the other thing is, we're dealing with professionals, top-notch professionals, our employees. And, and they can make sense of this. They know. And they know the envelopes that they wanna push, and that's their right if they want to.
I, I agree a hundred percent. And I, I actually have a different perspective because I worked in government for so many years. And I'm not an attorney, but there is case law. We've always taught that you have to be careful when you're in your duty of giving opinions because there is case law where individuals dealt with government individuals, and they gave their opinion on something, and then they went and took action based on that opinion, and they came back and held the agency accountable for it. Perfect example, an inspector said, yeah, I think you can use that material, seems okay to me. And they went and they used it, and when they came and got inspected, they were told, no, that's not allowed. Well, a representative from your department said it was. And the courts agreed with that home, with that property owner. And the city ended up being liable to go in and remove all the, the material and use the appropriate material per the code. So I do have experience with that where, hey, if they just, if they even know that you are affiliated with that agency and you say X, it is reasonable for the public to believe that you are representing that agency, and that agency also believes X. So I do, that's how I see it, that's how I understand it. And I wonder if it could be something as simple as, it says, the language says here, identifies as a district employee, it could be as simple as represents themselves as a district employee. Because I believe that that's true. If you do represent yourself as an employee of agency X, this reasonable for the layman person to think, okay, they represent that agency, and that's probably the agency, how the agency feels as well. And that's just from my own personal experience.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need some, some sort of a
Yeah, I mean, I think we need some, some sort of a clarifier. Like in some of the things that I read online, they delineate when an employee is speaking on behalf of the entity versus themselves. That's why in these other policies, it's similar to that. And then it includes a line that says you should, like the employee should, separate out their views as their own. And that's why I think that that needs that. So I don't know. I think it's an open conversation about what it is we're really trying to solve here. It is important to have an employee's speech policy on its face because I think we should be encouraging our employees and making it clear when we do want them to speak out. The freedom of speech is incredibly important, I mean, at all times. But I absolutely believe that the policy should remain cleanly and plainly. It doesn't have to be very long, but we need some more explanations on it. Trustee Hall, and then maybe we'll go to public comment and then continue the conversation.
I, I thank you. I think I have a really, maybe a simple solution for B. So at the end of A, it says, but rather as an employee of the school district. Would it be appropriate to add that to B? Where it says are not speaking as an individual, but rather as an employee of the school district? That's where it's not protected, right? Because that's what we're saying is if, you know, if someone from communications is going to go on the news, they're saying they're representing the school district. Or if a teacher is being interviewed and they're saying, I'm speaking as a teacher. That's what we're trying to say is that that is, that is the part that's not potentially protected simply because they are speaking on behalf of the district versus I go, you know, to a party and of, you know, and say, oh, by the way, I work for the school district and then here's my personal opinion. Those are two very different things. And I think that's what we're trying to define here. And I think it's just, we have to be careful that we're not being too specific. But I think it would be really simple to just say, but rather as an employee of the district. Something like the way A is, that's why I think I like A. Because it's very clear that that's on behalf of the district. Like if I'm in my classroom and I say something of my own opinion. I mean, I used to do, before every election season, remind all of our teachers that we don't, we don't share our, who we're going to be voting for. Because as a teacher in the classroom, that's not your job. That's not protected speech. So I just think that would be the clarifying piece that we need for B. C, I'm actually okay with because according to my understanding of the Pickering Conict test, if it is a specific matter of your employment, like I'm not going to come to a board meeting and talk about my evaluation. That's a private matter. If I'm upset with my principal for giving me a bad evaluation, that, you don't do that. So I, I'm okay with C. It was B that I really just felt like wasn't clear enough. So if we could add something as simple as that, I'd be totally fine with it.
Go ahead.
I think we could easily add that, if that adds clarity to it. I think it would be consistent with what the law says. And so if it was the will to add the right after capacity, add comma, but rather, comma, as an employee of the district, and then proceed to the or into the C, I think that would be consistent with what the law has.
J.J., could we have our public comment? Can we hear from our public?
Joseph Medulla.
Welcome, President Medulla.
Thank you. Good afternoon. President Smith, Joe, Superintendent Joe Ernst. I'm Joe Medulla. I serve as the president for the Washoe Professional Technical Association. I'm here today to discuss Agenda Item 3.03. And I had a whole thing written up. But after hearing the discussion here, I really, I do agree with what everything has been said. And I really appreciate the work that Council has put into this. My only concerns are two B and two C. And I fully appreciate the need to sort of write it this way. But it would be very much appreciated if there was some sort of clarity around that. You know, my main concern is like, as a board member or as a president, as an employee coming up here and being able to just speak freely. And I think that's, that's an important thing to preserve. And it's important for people to feel like they can come up here and just openly speak to you guys and kind of express their opinions and, you know. So anyway, that's, that's my piece. But I would ask that the board request further revisions, which is sort of sounds like we're heading. But overall, either that or maybe we, like you guys mentioned, maybe it's not needed as a, as an item, you know. That's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, President. We appreciate, thank you so much. And we haven't really heard from you before. So President Medulla is the new president of WOTA. Yeah, our Professional Technical Association.
Earl Spriggs.
Welcome, Mr. Spriggs.
Hello, Earl Spriggs, representing the WVA, not as an individual capacity here. First off, the WVA really understands and agrees with the importance of creating reasonable regulations on speech. While the discussion about removing this is a potentially valid one, having set guidelines that your staff can follow and know what to look at and having reasonable expectations for them is extremely important for consistency across the district. Otherwise, we run into issues where individuals interpret differently and that becomes a big issue. The main thing here is that we do not want our staff participating in speech that is neither professional nor constructive to the mission that we all share, which is to create the best possible school district for our students, staff, and community. Our main concerns, as you can imagine, are around Section 2, specifically two B. The suggestion that trustee Hall presented for modifying that is very much in line with what we were looking at. Current language in there uses, in the current 4,500, uses pursuant to his or her official duties. That right there clears up the confusion a lot and would make this much easier for everyone to understand. So we thank you so much for the conversation around this and the diligence in making sure this is done right.
Thank you so much, Mr. Spriggs.
The board received emails from Kalen Evans with the WEA, Athar Hasbula with the ACLU, and Colby Rogen with WSPA.
So we'll bring it back here. And so just to level set, the board policies are the what and the administrative regulations are the how we go about it. Is that right? I mean, that's generally what we say. Thank you so much for our public commenters and to the emails that we received. It feels like the way that B is written. I would personally like to see some definition. Because again, for the average person, you should be able to look at the policy and understand what it means. And I think that there would be some benefit there. And honestly, I don't even know why we need B. I would prefer that we just strike it because A encompasses, and gut check me because I'm not a lawyer here. But if A clarifies that the speak, the speech while they're performing the work on behalf of the district is, is not in an individual or private capacity, do we need B? At all? Because I got to tell you, I am good with two and two A, but I don't understand the B.
I think it, it does address different things. If you look at A, A is during the workday essentially. And if, you know, an employee will go to a rally or somewhere or, you know, be quoted in the newspaper as, you know, I'm speaking on behalf of the district when I say this. And then say something that's objectionable to the district or contrary to the mission of the district. And they're not actively working at the time, that's really what B is getting to. So it really does kind of address a little bit of a separate issue.
Could B be evolved to say that, though? Because it doesn't read that way to me. But the way you explain it makes sense. Is there a way to expand on B that clarifies that when a district employee is taking it upon themselves to falsely represent what they're saying is on behalf of the district rather than their own personal opinion? Okay.
I think what that gets to, though, is it's contrary to really what the basic for, you know, gist of the policy here is. It's not a prohibition on anything. It's getting to, because I think that will be a prohibition on, essentially, unprofessional speech. That's not what this is meant to do. This is meant to say when it's protected and when it's not protected.
Okay. I still think this reads to the average person that the minute you identify as a district employee, you're not speaking in an individual or private capacity. Because remember, people aren't going to have talented lawyers sitting in front of them when they read it online. But I certainly don't want to beat a dead horse. Also, we have to provide direct suggestion to you. So let's see what everybody's thinking here. We've all had the opportunity to talk. We've heard from our public commenters. We've gotten our emails. I will tell you right now, I would prefer that B be revised to explain what you've just shared and to have some definition around some of these key terms in addition to carving out any representation whatsoever about what protected speech is. But that's just me. Let's start moving towards action, hearing what everybody else is thinking as well, too. Trustee Westlake, I know you've had your light on a couple of times, but we haven't heard as much from trustee Nicolet, so we'll go to her.
Oh, all right, thank you. I can tell you straight up that unless we go back to the original, less is best, that made much more sense, didn't have some guardrails that are hard to define and, and hard to understand, that I have to vote no on anything with this update. And I just want to let legal know that I appreciate all this hard work. And there's some fabulous lessons learned here. And I really appreciate it. And I think definitely some of this work belongs in administrative regulation because this is worthy work. So that's, thank you.
Okay, thank you, President Smith. I just, I want to say one more thing about B I'm really not happy with. I mean, everything else is great except on C are not considered matters of public concern. As a person, I'm a board member, but I'm also the public. I mean, that's very subjective. To me, something that is not of public concern could mean something completely different than trustee Woodley. Like, I mean, I, I'm concerned if a whole staff in a school is, is really not happy. I mean, I, as a trustee, that concerns me. But as, as the public, I, hearing that, that, that is a concern to me. I mean, I, as a trustee and as public, I want our teachers to be happy. And if it's, if we're saying in such a subjective matters of public concern, I, that, that is, that's concerning to me.
First of all, thank you to everybody for putting all the thought into an extremely complicated topic that has so much connectivity with other law and other aspects that it is really a very complicated topic. And so I can really appreciate the intentions that are being described around potential clarification on two B to perhaps read in a manner that I think there was some initial maybe thought about how that would work. I would also say that I, I'm, you know, very appreciative of the legal team and the legal analysis on this type of stuff. This is, you know, these are our content experts for sure. And, and I really appreciate the trustees' feedback and the public's feedback on this in terms of, you know, the, at first glance, when we read it, what it might be saying. So I think that that's all warranted. And I think that there's, you know, possibility in terms of what that will look like. But I also don't know what else then needs to be modified as a result of that. And when we started the conversation, I, I thought I heard, this is the first spot that we have some concern with. And so it sounded like we might be getting maybe to a motion or something like that. I don't know. But I thought I also heard there's other parts. Now, I heard our comments, the public comments were really, I think, specific to two B, two C, that type of thing. But I also thought there might have been conversation up here that said there were other parts. So just wanted to make sure.
It was just to stay on B and then we just kind of segwayed to C. But I think that's all that there is. It was just before we start bouncing around, just keeping it with that. And the, the only other thing that I had was to share my suggestion around limited and light definition. Because to trustee Westlake's point, I happen to know from doing my research that public concern has an actual meaning. And maybe that definition would be helpful. That's why I said, oh, I understand some of these things when I read these other policies that had light definitions. And that's why I wanted to bring that forward. So, but I think that's all that we had. I think we've covered all the things that people had. So I think this is the sum total of our thoughts.
I did mention the whistleblower, but I trust our legal team when they say that is addressed elsewhere in depth. So that was my only other concern. But I trust that you guys have that covered somewhere else. So that was really the only other thing.
Well, I mean, at some point, we're going to have to ask them what to do. So last time, we said, hey, great work. Can you please come back and make some revisions based on the feedback? We could do that again. We could pass it exactly as it is. We could, we could vote to scrap the entire policy. But we do have to give direction and be clear because you are many things, but you should not be expected to be a mind reader. And we should be moving towards a version that ultimately would get a majority vote to pass or possibly eliminating the policy overall. But at the end of the day, we do have to direct the superintendent on what it is we'd like to see next as we work towards something that will stand as that clarifying statement to our staff.
So just to add on to everything that's been said, it's narrowed down to everything is okay except for two B. And if I understood right, maybe just that language on two B identifies themselves as, you know, an official capacity or something like that reworded. And I think you said you agreed to, that might be fine to do that. Do you have any specific language in your notes there that you might relate back to us in that conversation?
I do, trustee Phoenix. It was exactly the last couple of sentences, the last sentence, the last line of two A, but rather, an employee, as an employee of the district. I think trustee Hall was talking about putting that at the very end of B. And that would be consistent with the law. So if there, if there was an amendment to do that, it would be consistent with what the law permits.
So just on, to caveat on what you had said, it kind of ties up where we've been going. And we're pretty good on everything except for that. And I'm just, just listening in and looking to go ahead and get that motion as amended. Because I think we do need to have something. And I think keeping it simple, you know, totally simple, but enough guidance and go to the regulation where you can have it spelled out for you. There you go. And it can be as detailed as you want to have it. I think general in scope, it goes back to First Amendment protection. That's it. Keeping it right in there and adding that amendment there, I think that would be good.
Let me suggest something else, if I may. I appreciate your comments and I agree with you. I've been taking notes on specific issues, union, CBA. We could add that to the administrative regulation if you're, so if you want to do that. We could define that whistleblower. We can put that into the regulation. It's not specifically up there, but we could add that as a sub-paragraph. And the open meeting law, NRS 24103, if this is that big of a concern, which I don't really feel it is, but if the board does. NRS 2410353 gives qualified privilege to witnesses who are testifying in front of a public body. So that, we could build that into that part of the regulation if you want that stuff, which I got the impression you did. So I've been taking notes. So thank you.
No, so just to thank you for taking the notes and staying on point and all the great conversations getting there. I really do think it's time for a motion. And I, I'm ready to put in for a motion. So, board colleagues? Yes? Okay, so I move that the Board of Trustees provide preliminary approval of the proposed amendments of Board Policy 4,500, District Employee Speech as amended as you had stated. And again, we're going to the 13-day public comment for, the 13-day public comment review and comment period. So again, we still have that public comment period to have more input.
Point of clarity?
Well, no, hold on. So we have a motion, we need a second or it dies, and then we continue the conversation. So if we don't get a second, then we can continue the conversation on what this is.
Trustee Mayberry just.
Okay, very good. So now we can have discussion on the motion because we have a motion by trustee Phoenix. We have a second by Vice President Mayberry. I don't honestly know what we're moving forward right now. I like the idea of it. I would want to see another revision back to the board. I, I appreciate what you have here. I'm not entirely sure without seeing it what B will really mean. what B will really mean or say. I do believe that definitions are helpful here because again, a policy should make sense to the average reader. I would like to see the definitions. I like where we're going, but I can't vote yes on something when honestly, I don't, I'm not reading it. I don't see it right now, so I can't support it. So that's my, that's my two cents. This one's way too important for me to just say yes and then see what comes back. Because just as a reminder, and also for our two newer colleagues who are not quite so newer anymore, when anything has already been approved by the board once, it goes on consent and then you need two trustees to pull it off of consent. And so I can't vote yes on something that I'm not really looking at or I don't, I don't think is perfectly clear. But that's just my two cents.
My two, three, and four cents is I don't think C with the subjective ambiguous language of matters of public concern. And I think that I was pretty descriptive in why that was ambiguous and subjective without there being some definition to clarify that a little bit or just remove that because it's very ambiguous, very subjective. I can't, I can't support it. But I do appreciate all the work. I really do.
I'm, maybe I'm reading this wrong, but the phrase "public concern" is an actual legal phrase. So that was one of the ones that you asked for a definition of. So I think that's where it feels like a really broad term, but legally, there's an actual definition of what public concern means. So I think that's where the concern is, on the public concern. So I think I'm a little, I'm a little confused, too. So are we asking, and maybe I just need clarification. Are we asking for this to be brought back or are we approving without seeing it? That's what I think I'm a little confused.
Well, the motion was to make the amendments as discussed and then immediately move it to the 13-day public review. And that's why I can't do that.
Okay.
Is it helpful at all to make the revisions now in the document? Can we access the document? Because I think that's what I'm hearing. I think the trustees want to see what it says so they can get behind it. That's the purpose of this discussion and the second. Otherwise, yeah.
So let's say the motion dies. I don't know if it's possible to do this in real time. But when we have discussion on the motion, we need to keep it tighter to that conversation on the motion. But yeah, absolutely, we could. But we asked for quite a lot. And I admittedly don't know that that is fair to have them in real time do this, particularly because I at least asked for some definitions. So whereas when we used to have our policy committee, yeah, we would type right into it. But I personally believe we just gave our team a tall order to do in real time while we're watching them. And that's why I'm a no because I would prefer that they do this work, come back, and we do it again. So that's, that's why I'm a no because I would want to see what this looks like before I actually just vote on it and advance it to the 13-day.
Can I just say a thank you also?
Oh, absolutely. We can always say thank you.
And I appreciate that you guys even added in more, even though I said, hey, the whistleblower, you said it's covered elsewhere. I appreciate you guys even wanting to give more clarity. And I still think we're, we're not like a huge, huge document here, but I think clarity is important.
Yeah, I think this is, personally, I think this is a lot to be asking them to do in real time. I'm not comfortable with the pressure that this is putting on the team right now to do. We have a motion. We can see where that goes. But I think that this is a lot to expect the time, the team to do in real time in front of us with full definitions and really looking at it. Because honestly, with B, just having as an employee of the district, I don't know for me that that solves just the simple identifier as a district employee. From what I heard from Mr. Pick, it's really when an employee is representing themselves as speaking on behalf of the district rather than just solving it by putting an employee of the district. So I'm of the opinion that if we gave our team the opportunity to process this again and come back, we would be a lot closer rather than putting them on the spot to do this right now. Because I don't feel that this is an appropriate pressure for them to do in real time in a public meeting. But that's, that's my two cents. I think we're putting them on the spot with something.
The language that's up there is trustee Phoenix's motion. It's not the definitions or anything else. That's his motion.
Okay. So we have a motion by trustee Phoenix. We have a second by vice president Mayberry. We'll see where that goes. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, that's three ayes. All those against, nay?
Nay.
Nay? All right, so that motion dies three to four. So let's see where we can land on this. Let's see where we can land on this. I would tell you that if the team had an opportunity to consider this, integrate the edits and bring it back, we're much closer to it. And then I would also add, we got public comment right before this meeting. And I mean, like, within 15 minutes of it, that I don't know anybody on the district staff or, I mean, we certainly read it, but there could be good knowledge there that the team would also consider in coming back with something else. So I would, I would just point that out. Because again, we do our best work when we hear from the public. We heard from them today. And there could be some positive things that came from that. But we have to do something. Or we don't do anything and then the old policy stands. But we know that it incorrectly references case law and it is, we have to do something.
I would like to make a motion. Oh, are you sure? Do you want to revise your motion? Or, okay. I would like to, what? What did we?
No, it's okay. I know I was going to say. So, you know, we're just going to, I move that the board of trustees revise preliminary approval to the proposed amendments as revised and come back to the board meeting, next, the next board meeting for approval?
No.
No, sorry.
JJ shaking her head.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I think we say, I don't think we say preliminary approval. I think we move to. Direct the superintendent.
Okay, there you go. That's right. Yeah. I move that the board.
Of trustees directs.
Of trustees directs superintendent.
To make the proposed amendments.
To make the, to make the proposed amendments.
To Board Policy 4500.
To Board Policy 4500. Does that sound better?
2B, 2C.
Was it?
2, 2B.
It's 2B.
2B, 2C. To include definitions.
And definitions.
Definition of public concern. Right? Is that right?
Here, let's workshop this. What do we got here? Let's workshop it. So I'm hearing among this conversation, I'm hearing that the board directs the superintendent to return to a future board meeting with the proposed amendments for Board Policy 4500 with revisions to 2B, 2C, and the addition of definitions based on legal guidance. Is that kind of like where you're going?
That sounds about right.
Well, no, no, this is your motion. I'm just, I am trying to hear you and workshop this. So that, because again, what we did in the last meeting was we said, hey, we want more. And we weren't very clear when we put our team as situation to be mind readers, which is never fair for them. And so I think we have to be explicit about what it is that we're looking for so that they can hit the mark.
So was those amendments to 2B?
2B, 2C, and the addition of definitions.
Additional definitions that were added.
And they added some provisions, too.
Yeah, that's what we said.
The alphabet.
Yes.
So do you want number three?
Yes.
Okay, we have to do this clean for the record, though. And JJ is also a wizard over there. I know she writes things down. Because what I'm hearing is revision to 2B, 2C, section three, the addition of definitions, and any other revisions as suggested by our legal team. Because between now and then, they may review things and say, hey, we heard you on this and we changed that. I always want to make sure that they know that they have a space to do their work as well.
Madam President, point of clarification on the revisions to 2B, 2C. I don't know that, I don't recall what that revision suggestion was. Just want to make sure we have clarification on that, that there was any suggestion.
2C, it was just defining matters of public concern.
Definition of public concern.
So I don't think that's an amendment to C. That's just a definition. Good question.
You had those all up there, right?
I do have to just say, I don't know how much more helpful a definition of public concern will be. Literally, the legal definition is a matter of public concern in the overall surrounding community. Like, that's the definition. And so you really have to get into specifics. And so just putting it out there, I'm not sure how helpful a definition will be on that, but I'll do my best.
A teacher coming and speaking about. A teacher, a group of teachers coming and talking about something occurring in a school. I think that would, what you just said, I think that would definitely, what you said is the definition, that would fall under what a public concern would be. I mean, if you're in the public, you want your schools running smoothly. So what did you say? I'm sorry, Kevin.
It's an objective reasonableness test, essentially. It looks at the surrounding community and a judge makes the decision on whether the public at large would think it's a matter of concern for the public at large. And so it's a judge that makes a case-by-case decision on it.
What, President Smith, what did you see was the definition of public concern?
So again, I am not a lawyer, but the way that I saw it addressed in other policies was government employees have the right to speak out on matters of public concern. And these are just such as government policies, public safety, and issues of social, political, or community interest. But again, like, that's not a legal definition. It's, that's the way that it was expressed in that policy. But still, it gave literally any explanation of what those things are. And that's why I asked for some sort of a definition on public concern. Because if now we're saying all of those things are public concern, then they should be able to speak. And then I would want to get rid of C. That's why I need to see a definition because I need to know what counts and what doesn't.
I just will remind you that guarantee that's from a university. The last thing you want is your teachers being able to speak out on political issues. We get hammered with that. Literally, today, the Office of General Counsel got a call from a principal the second day of school about this exact issue. This is political speech. It's in this classroom. I want it taken down. So I just.
Let's get rid of B and C.
And then.
So may I jump in? I know it's a pretty active discussion and it's an important discussion. And can appreciate, again, the comments because I do appreciate and I think we do want guardrails on public speech. So I think it's important that we don't just eliminate it. Seems as if we've kind of moved to that next place after that. Again, I appreciate the intention to clarify the language to make it a little bit more readable for folks and want to continue to recognize this is not saying people can't come to the board meetings to express concern. In fact, as a superintendent, I welcome feedback and want that. This is not saying that. And so I want us to be careful on what we're solving for right now because it's not saying they can't do that. Yet it feels as if we're trying to make this more than that. And I just want to put that out there again from, you know, the content legal experts. It is not saying that folks can't come to the board meeting and express their concerns. It's not saying that. We've heard that on a number of occasions. So as we move to revise, I just want to make sure that we're not trying to revise something that it's not.
No, I get, I get you. It's like we're re, so here's the thing. I know that the old policy wasn't great, but I almost wish we just redlined the parts of it that weren't applicable anymore because we're totally building a brand-new policy from scratch and it's such an important one. But yeah, your point is well-taken. I still feel confident, though, that based on this conversation and coming back, that the team has heard us and will just explain, like, the way Kevin even just described it, I think was great. As long as it makes sense to the average person who's reading it and they can fairly and reasonably understand what's allowed and not, then I'll be good with it.
JJ, would you mind scrolling up to the purpose statement? I just want to call attention to the line that says that district employees, that we acknowledge the general right to district employees to speak on issues of public concern when doing so in their personal or individual capacity. That's what we're all arguing for here. And so I think, I think we're getting too into the weeds in that simply two, two, the section two is really just saying, if you are saying you are representing the district, that is not protected, that may not be protected speech. And so we're like going in circles a little bit here when I think we just, it's already defined in the purpose and we just need a really simple clarification to kind of further remind people when they're reading section two that again, if you are trying to represent on behalf of the district, that may not be protected speech. So I just feel like we're kind of talking in circles a little bit because C is not saying that you can't come and speak individually and say, I have too many kids on my caseload. It's just saying that that's not necessarily something that you talk about under First Amendment rights. You're just, as a district employee, saying, hey, there's too many students on my caseload. That's a big difference. So I think that's why we're getting into the weeds with this. And that's what Neil has been trying to say is like to be really careful of going to, like, trying to identify all this in the policy is a problem. So I don't, I don't personally have a problem with C the way it's written because it follows the law like perfectly and follows the Pickering Conic test as far as I read it. And I really think that B just needs that little bit of clarification. And I do like the additions for three. And if there are some definitions that feel, it would help. And I know that there were a couple of emails that we got that asked for some specific definitions. So I think that's, that's where I'm at with this. If, I don't, I don't want to get too into the weeds and too detailed with this because that's what the administrative regulation is for. I personally just want to see a couple points of clarification so that it doesn't feel to the average person reading this that we're saying you can't come and do this. We're just saying we are following the law and the latest in this, you know, the courts, which changes literally every day. So we cannot identify court cases either because, like the previous one did. Because that's, they change every day.
All right, let's seize the moment. All right, let's seize the moment. So walk us through what this motion for Trustee Phoenix can look like. Because you're, you're carrying this, friend. Help, help your neighbor out.
Okay. So I think the motion is that we, the Board of Trustees directs the superintendent to revise the, or to make the amendments to 2B and add definitions at, as discussed with the, in the additions with 3, in paragraph 3, sorry, to clarify. Does that make sense?
Almost.
Almost.
Let's, let's say it again, and then if Trustee Phoenix likes it, he's going to say, so moved.
So moved. Okay. Okay.
This is how teamwork happens.
Yeah. So, the Board of Trustees, we move, or, he moves, that the Board of Trustees provides the superintendent, or, no, what's, what is it? Directs, thank you. Directs the superintendent to bring back the proposed amendments to Section 2B with the addition of definitions for clarification and additions to Section 3, to a upcoming meeting.
The definition was 2C.
And so moved.
Did I get that right?
Yeah.
I think you got something. All right, we have a motion by Trustee Phoenix. Do we have a second on that motion?
A second.
Okay, we have a...
Discussion?
Yeah, absolutely.
If, if we do send this back, I just request and ask that, whatever issues we have now, let's say it now, because I don't want to go, I don't want to be at the next meeting and say, can you take this back again? I want it to be, if those are implemented, and we see that draft, that we can get a vote and not beat this over and over again. So, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Vice President Woodley. Just, just for staff, excuse me, Clerk Woodley.
He got a promotion.
You guys are starting to make my head spin a little bit. Okay. All right, so, exercise, nah, I'll spare it. So, I just want to make sure staff feels very clear to the couple of recent points that we do understand the intention and we feel we can. While it may have some limitation, we understand what's being asked. I just, again, it's about that clarity that we've talked about, and I, I just want to make sure that you, that Mr. Pick, Mr. Rimbardo, that you both feel that you have that direction and, and understand where we're going. And if not, no problem to ask clarifying questions.
Well, I'm looking at his notes, and they seem to match mine, so I'm going to go with yes.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Is there also a way for discussion on the motion? Because Clerk Woodley's totally right. We started on the 29th and just said, just give us more. You gave us more, now it's our responsibility to be clear, so that we don't spin you in the hamster wheel. When you make these edits, is there anything that would preclude our legal team from, like, sending this out or offering conversations with trustees that still want to have it? Can, can we do that between now and another meeting? If there's, I don't, I just want to make sure, because Clerk Woodley's totally right. We want to make sure that we don't send this back to you again. Although, I don't think sending something back two times is too much when it's as important as employee's speech. I know the saying is, measure twice, cut once. Sometimes you have to measure three times.
Well, this will be five for me. I've tried to change this policy four times.
You're getting closer.
So, we can, we're not going to have this by the next meeting. We have a Supreme Court brief to file that Kevin and I are working on together against the NDE. You know, the case we won, they decided to appeal it, so, so we won't, we won't have it done by the next board meeting. That being said, we'll work on, we'll work on getting this together. We can send it out and do small group briefings, because it wouldn't be, there's no litigation surrounding it, so I can't brief the board. I could send out a draft. Drafts are not public records, but make sure, if I send you a draft, you treat it as a draft and don't leak it, because then it becomes a public record. Not that you would do that intentionally, I'm just, you know, be careful with it. And then you can give us a call and, and sit down with us. I, I do want to dissuade that a little bit, because that's not fair to your fellow trustees. No one trustee should have more authority than the others. So I'm a little, uncomfortable with that, but I'd be happy to send out a draft early if the superintendent is comfortable with that.
Yeah, I, I tend to concur with Mr. Rimbardo, particularly given the vote and given how the deliberations have gone. It does feel as if it warrants, particularly given that it won't be coming back to the next meeting, that it will come back to the following, but it feels as if it warrants the, the entire dais conversation around it, just get, given the topic. Again, we, we're happy to do the small group briefings, if, if we really feel that those will be good, but I, I think just on this conversation, it does feel like it, it, it would be appropriate to, to bring it back to the whole.
May I suggest, I'll, I'll send it early, and then you can do whatever you want with it. Don't send it back to me, just bring that to the board. How about that? That's kind of a compromise position. This way, you see it a little earlier than standard support material. Does that work?
Thank you.
But, is that okay with you?
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Well, we have a motion by Trustee Phoenix. We have a second by Trustee Westlake, and we will go ahead and, oh, I'm sorry, I see Dr. Nicolet.
I'm just ready to vote.
I like where you're going with that, so let's do it. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
All right, motion carries five to two. Thank you so much, colleagues. This was a really, really important discussion, I appreciate it. And thank you so much to our legal team for their patience and support as we worked through this. That closes item 3.03, and we move on now to item 3.04, the discussion and possible action to approve changes to the Washoe County School District's Group Health Insurance Plan for the 2026 plan year to include a premium rate increase of up to 10% for the 2026 plan year with possible offsets from changes to plan benefits such as increasing deductibles and/or increasing copays, and consideration of the recommendation of the Group Insurance Committee for a 7.5% rate increase for the 2026 plan year. This is an item for possible action, and we have with us our Benefits Manager, Mackenzie Howren, and our Group Insurance Committee Chair, Jeff Bazo. Welcome both of you.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us. We want to extend a special welcome to Maya. What an exciting first meeting for you to be a part of. I'm equally excited and jealous of you for this opportunity. This is going to be fun. Thanks for having us. I'm very grateful to have our Group Insurance Committee Chair, Jeff Bazo, presenting with us this, this year, to ensure you all have a good scope of and understanding of the process that we go through every year to determine our health insurance rates for the following calendar year. Thanks, JJ. Okay, so every year, we always start with a little overview of how many members we currently have covered on our plan. And so, these numbers are pulled from the end of June. So we have just under 7,000 employees on our plan. We have almost exactly 700 retirees, and we have about 4,500 dependents totaling just under 12,000 lives.
So what does it mean to be self-funded? Our, our health, our group insurance plan is self-funded. So what that means is rather than paying an outside insurance carrier a premium to, to cover all of our, our members, we take on the financial risk as the district. So, we collect the revenues from other funds. So, in the bottom-left corner, one of, every payroll or every paycheck, there's a contribution from the district on behalf of the employee to the health insurance fund to pay their premium. Employees and retirees, if they have dependents, that's the upper-left bucket, that premium revenue goes into the health insurance fund. Then, the money's in the, the health insurance fund are used to pay for the health insurance claims. So, we take on the risk of, if there's a bad year, that rates could increase significantly or we're on the hook for those costs, but...
Mr. Bazo, I am so sorry, we need to do a disclosure.
Yeah, my fault. Sorry, sorry, Jeff. So trustees, as you may recall, we have to do a disclosure, because some of you may receive insurance under NRS 281A, which is the law, ethics law in Nevada. So pursuant, so what I'm going to do is I'm read the disclosure, or I'm not going to read it, I'm just going to say the disclosure, and then I'm going to ask each one of you to confirm whether or not you receive benefits and whether or not the disclosure is accurate. This way, each one of you don't have to say it. This relates to the past ethics complaint that we received from a previous person. Okay, so pursuant to NRS 281A, you each receive benefits paid for by the Washoe County School District. However, your vote on this matter does not affect you in any different way or give you any other different benefit than it does any other member of the community who receives these benefits through the health insurance plan. Would that be accurate, Trustee Nicolet?
Yes.
Trustee Mayberry?
Yes, I, I don't receive the benefits.
Oh, you don't receive the benefits?
I do not.
So then you, do you receive the benefits?
I do not, thank you.
Okay, then if you don't either, yeah, then...
Diane Nicolet, I do not receive the benefits.
Okay. Trustee Smith, or President Smith?
I do receive the benefits.
And would my, would the admonishment that I just said allowed apply to you then?
That is correct.
And it's accurate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Woodley.
Trustee Woodley, yes, that is correct. Thank you.
Trustee Westlake?
Yes, I do receive the benefits, and it does not affect in the manner in which I would vote.
Okay, great.
I do not receive the benefits.
I do not receive the benefits.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone. Sorry to interrupt.
No problem, that, that was important. So, so again, being self-funded, we're on the hook for all the costs for health insurance claims, but also, you know, the upside of being self-funded is if we have really good years in our health insurance fund or the claims experience, then we recognize that savings in the fund or can help mitigate rate increases that way. So that, that's just a high-level overview of that, and I'll, I'll pass it back to Mackenzie.
So like Jeff mentioned, when we are on the hook for these claims and ensuring that we have enough revenue coming into our health insurance fund, that we can be responsible for these claims that we are accruing, every year, we go through a four-step process, and we want, wanted to highlight the four-step process this year, because we think it's a really good example of our guiding principles in showing stewardship, knowledge, and collaboration among multiple departments within our organization. And so, the first step is to analyze trend, and the trend allows us to look at the culmination of physician contracts, new treatments, and what our current usage of our plan is. And our consultant, LP Insurance, and their underwriters do this process. Are, we are large enough to look at our own plan ourselves, so we look at our own trend every year. Once they analyze what that trend is, then our Human Resources Office, our Business Office, and LP Insurance meet to review what that trend is and apply it to our current context. So we look at upcoming initiatives in WCSD, current budget projections, anything and everything that should be involved in this conver- conversation to ensure we're being collaborative. Once we determine what that premium rate increase or potentially decrease, because we are self-funded, could be, we bring that rate to the Group Insurance Committee. Every year, I like to highlight that the committee is built up of people who represent each association that we have, so there is strong representation from multiple members in our organization. This year, our Group Insurance Committee met in May and July and reviewed the proposal that we had, had a very thorough discussion. I'm very proud of them. And then the last step is for Jeff and I, as the staff liaison and the chair, to come and present to you all. So we have some historical context for all of you. So, following COVID, the plan was running very well, which allowed us to propose a 0% premium rate increase for three years. Once people were able to start accessing care again in 2024, we needed a higher premium rate increase to account for the claims that we were accruing. At the Group Insurance Committee meeting, so at that step number three of that process, we proposed an 8% premium rate increase, and the Group Insurance Committee proposed six. That was then what was approved here and carried forward. We had a similar process in 2025, where we brought a 2.5% premium rate increase to the Group Insurance Committee, and they proposed a 1.3, which is then what ended up being approved We have a similar practice or trend that we're seeing here. We looked at the trend this year based on that process, and we proposed a 10% premium rate increase for calendar year 2026. The Group Insurance Committee, like I said, had a very thorough discussion. I'm very proud of them, and the recommendation that they bring to the table today is 7.5%.
Thanks, Mackenzie. Now I can add some context to the, the committee's decision. It's a, each member of the committee is grappling with the impact to their members. You know, a 10% rate increase means a 10%, if you have dependents, the premium for the dependents is going to go up 10%. So, weighing that was also the, the health of the health insurance fund. So, what does it look like lately? You know, the calendar year 2024 had a significant amount of large claims, so part of the committee's decision was, well, we don't, that was a significant amount of large claims. Large claims are usually in the several hundreds of thousands of dollars. So, will that trend continue into the future? It could, it may not. So, part of the recommendation of 7.5% is thinking that those large claims won't be as drastic in the upcoming year, and therefore that the 10% rate increase wouldn't be needed. So I just wanted to provide some context on the, the committee's reasoning there.
Thank you for that, and thank you for clarifying that this recommendation is coming forward from our committee, which is made up from all the different associations. So I'm, I'm fine with this, and thank you for also clarifying that the district still provides the benefit, the full cost of it to the employee. This is what affects the dependents. My only question is, do we do the analysis to understand, you know, where there could be better controls? I'll give you a case in point. At a previous company I worked at, they looked at and they saw that there was a high incidence of people using the ER that could have been more appropriate for an urgent care. They started an education campaign on that, and there were actually some guardrails. You can't go to the ER, you know, unless it's an emergency. Have we thought about how we use education and precise identification to try to bring down maybe excessive emergency care or any of those trends we're seeing?
Yeah, I, I have a hard time containing my smile, because I get really jazzed about these things. And you're really talking about what the Group Insurance Committee brought to the table, too, right? They had a very thorough discussion about what it means to be a smart consumer when they're accessing healthcare, and that's difficult to do. And unless we teach our members how to do that, they're not going to be equipped to be able to do that, right? So they had a very thorough discussion, same thought process as you, and in alignment that we need to be engaging our members more in how to be smart consumers.
Because we are self-funded, so what it feels like, oh, I'll just do this, no, 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 we're all paying for that, like, it's not some big brother. Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Howren, Trustee Westlake, and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, President Smith. So, I mean, that, I think what President Smith said, that is very, very important, educating everyone using it. I'm just happy to have insurance. But I still feel I need to ask, having come from an insurance background, there is strength and power in numbers, in speaking to insurance companies and, and working on premiums. Have we even looked at going through, like, you know, as, as a group to get in coverage through an insurance company? And then if they're trying to raise, I know if they try and raise the rate too much, it's like, we're, we're shopping it. So, I mean, the self-infunded, I think it gives us autonomy and control, and I appreciate that, but 7,000 employees, I mean, that's, that's a significant path to go and get insured, not as self-funded, and then you always have the power, if they're trying to jack up the premium, to say, you know, we're going to shop it. So I, I don't know. I mean, has that been looked at?
Yeah, I think we're, I think you're touching on a few different important components that go into running a self-funded health insurance plan. And so I think your comment on how large we are is true, right? So anytime we go out to bid for any of these contracts, we do have a competitive advantage with how many lives we're covering. At this point, because we are so large, we still are more competitive to be self-funded than we are to work with a private health insurance company. And another point that I'll mention is that during the Group Insurance Committee, all of the representatives went and spoke back to their members, and all of the members gave the feedback that they would prefer that we increase the premium rate as opposed to making any plan changes. So while the premium will need to increase, people are pretty happy with the coverage that they currently have.
See, and I think that's the beauty, everything, I was going to ask you a little bit about that, and, and the Group Health Insurance Committee, the Group Insurance Committee, you know, everybody had an opportunity to participate, take back to their respective labor organizations. Assume it was unanimous, right?
The vote for the premium?
Yes.
It was not unanimous.
Okay.
Yeah, we had a few members who... Yeah, we had a few members who I think were interested in having a higher premium rate increase than 7.5.
Okay, well, that's good to know, but nonetheless, I just, I do think it's, it's, and I appreciate that transparency, I think that's important for everybody to know because you, nobody wants to pay more in, in insurance. But the sad, hard, cold reality is costs are going up across the board, so something has to give and it sounds like this is a, a good compromise and, but I do want to give a shout out to the group insurance committee for the work they've done and, and the representation and bringing this before us and frankly making some sacrifices, thank you.
JJ, do we have any public comment on this?
The board received an email from Kalen Evans with the WEA.
All right, let's, let's lay on the plane. Who would like to make the motion or we can have additional conversation if someone would like to talk more?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and give it a shot, I'll go ahead and approve item 3.04.
Second.
All right. Do we, so do we need to read out the whole motion?
I think we would just need to clarify, JJ, correct me if I'm wrong, that we're approving a 7.5% premium rate increase and no plan changes.
I'm happy to read the whole motion, is that?
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah, the board of trustees approves changes in the Washoe County School District Group Health Insurance Plan for the 2026 plan year to include a premium rate increase of up to 10% with possible offsets from changes to plan benefits such as increasing deductibles and/or increasing copays and consideration. What the hell am I reading?
Hold on, let's, let's quickly.
So, so I think, I think clear, point of clarification, there was two options, one was the 10% with other deductibles and increased copays or just a flat 7.5.
Hi, thank you, Dr. Di, I apologize. I move that the board of trustees approves changes to the Washoe County School District Group Health Insurance Plan for the 2026 plan year to include a premium rate increase of up to 10% with possible offsets from changes to plan benefits such as increasing deductibles.
No, Vice President Mayberry is reading the motion that's there.
It says 7.5 at the end there.
Yes.
Can I ask for clarification, Mackenzie, are you asking the board to approve the changes to the plan based on the recommendation of the group insurance committee of a 7.5 rate increase?
Yes, so the group insurance committee is allowed to make a recommendation to the board and then you all are allowed to approve the final, either plan changes or premium rate increase. It's our recommendation that you move forward with the group insurance committee's recommendation of 7.5, so however, we wrote the agenda item to ensure you guys had the opportunity to change the recommendation if you felt needed to do so.
So I think you could just change 10% to 7.5 and just end the whole thing there.
I'm just reading the script, folks. Good God.
Yeah, hold on one second. Chief legal counsel, we did have a motion that said to approve 3.04 and then we had a second to.
Yeah, but he's clarifying what he meant by that, so let's just, so let's do this, read it again and then if the second concurs, the second can say I concur or second it again and then we can just move on. So. You ready?
Almost, I'm going to get this right this time. We spent so much time on the other item, I'm going to take my time on this one.
Am I, am I correct in saying that you could say to include a premium rate increase of up to 7.5% and just end it right there?
Yeah, yeah, right, okay, that's what I was getting to.
Yeah, include a premium rate increase of 7.5%.
7.5, right. So I move the board of trustees approve changes to the Washoe County School District Group Health Insurance Plan for the 2026 plan year of a 7.5% rate increase, period. Is that sufficient?
Second.
All right, we have a motion to increase the premium by 7.5%. We've got that made by Vice President Mayberry, we have a second by trustee Nicolet, seeing no lights on, I think we punched ya if you did. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries, seven to zero, thank you so much, Mackenzie and Jeff, we really appreciate you. That closes item 3.04, thank you. And closes section three in its entirety. We'll move on now to section four, these are our reports, starting with item 4.01, our student representative's report. Maya, I hope that this has been an engaging first meeting for you and this is your opportunity to take it away, what does student voice have cooking, how was your first day at school?
My first day at school was great. My name is Maya Hartley, good evening, everyone, I'm the new student representative. First student voice this year, we've decided to especially focus on chronic absenteeism, mental health among students, and some of us have been discussing an AI policy since many students don't know how much of it they're allowed to use, if they're allowed to use it at all. And so those are the main focuses that we've been trying to get at. And as a student representative, I bring a viewpoint from our ROTC, from sports, from academics, and I'm a member of Key Club NHS and then I'm also the president of my school's student voice.
Very impressive, we're incredibly glad to have you and we look forward to having your voice in these conversations in every place that you believe a voice should be, which is in everything because it affects you. So, thank you so much, Maya. All right, that closes item 4.01 and we'll move on now to item 4.02, our board reports, starting with, why don't we start over on this side, Dr. Nicolet?
Just wanted to give a big welcome to Maya, it's, I'm glad you're here and I can tell you're going to have a great, and I don't know if I heard you say she plays the big bass? The big bass. Yes, yes, maybe she'll play for us sometime. Okay, so I went to the 1701, 1701 group, formerly the Assistance League, and I said, why is 1701, why did you change it? Well, that's our address on VASR, so it's really that simple, they're the 1701 group. And I went to their groundbreaking and their, their expanding and just a wonderful group doing, they're kind of like a, they're silent champions in our community. And then I went to the WCSD Kickoff Academy for administrators, I could go on and on about how much fun that was and seeing everyone and, but what was really cool, I heard afterwards that our new nutrition services company, Southwest Food, what's that, South, Southwest Foods, Southwest Foods, what is it, Excellence, it doesn't matter. They served a wonderful lunch and I kind of was talking to the guy who's in charge of some of that and I said, how about serving lunch for the trustees, so maybe we can make that happen? I put a little food in his ear and then I went to the Debbie Smith Ribbon Cutting and, and toured our two greenhouses with Paul Hollis from Rail City, who has been a champion in Washoe County School District for agriculture and horticulture and all those sciences for a very long time. Went to the AACT Aviation Kickoff Academy and that ribbon cutting and the Guillamont Foundation, I just want to openly say thank you so much, what a wonderful, wonderful group of fabulous people representing a gentleman who, whose heart has been in aviation for a long time. And then I also went to the first day of school, six of them, my gosh, was that a marathon? Sparks Middle School, Debbie Smith, Desert Heights Elementary, McQueen High School, Hunter Lake Elementary, and then Hidden Valley Elementary School and had a wonderful time, spending that time with our deputy superintendent and with our superintendent, Super Joe, and it was just a wonderful time, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, again, I also want to thank Principal Matic and Maddox and Dr. Hartzog for the ribbon cutting, the Aviation Academy at AACT, truly a special time for, for all of us, thanks to this board for, for that support, I know that many of you know that was important to me and the sky's the limit with that program, so thank you very much, Superintendent Ernst, thank you as well. I also want to thank the Communications Division for rolling out the new website, it looks beautiful. I know that as, as I've rolled out a few public websites in my career, it's complicated, it's challenging, there's always hiccups along the way, but looking at it, navigating it, made me realize how antiquated the previous website was, so thank you for, for your efforts on that. Also want to thank again, the superintendent, his team, all of our educators, our legislators for helping make the last year one of our greatest years ever in terms of academic performance, so, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President, I'm going to start, do we have, yes, okay, so earlier this summer, I had the privilege of going to Washington DC for a national conference. One of our schools, Glenn Duncan, was nominated as a model school nationwide, they were actually the only district from the state of Nevada, there were schools from all over the country, some states had more than one district represented, they were the only school from the state of Nevada, they were identified as a model school. I actually got to participate in doing the presentation with Mr. Smith, Ryan Smith and his staff, they were amazing, Jade Hines, Adam Ingles, Holly Bennett, and Lori Perez, they were all amazing and they helped me, since I didn't really have the knowledge that they had, but I was able to present and we did have a theme for the trip because we were there for a week and it was something that Adam came up with and it was, I don't know why he came up with this because the school is the Dolphins, but the theme was chirp chirp, so as soon as it said chirp chirp, we were all ready, no, not this Adam, the teacher Adam, Adam Ingles, Ingles. But it was a wonderful time and it was beautiful because I got to see how dedicated and motivated teachers all over the country are and it was the first time I've been to dozens of conferences throughout my professional life and I've never seen motivated people the way I saw the teachers at this conference, they truly love what they do, so I really appreciate that. Also, earlier this summer, I got to participate in an annual caravan, prayer caravan, this is something that several churches do, they visit every agency in, in, in the area, Washoe County, the sheriff's office, cities, the government, so we met on a Saturday, Saturday morning and we did a prayer outside the school, they asked me what was my request and my request was that they pray for us to give us wisdom to do the right thing in what we do. And I want to give a special thanks to Michael Glenn, who's a Reno elder at the Reno Christian Fellowship, Pastor Cecil Manero from the Word of Life Ministries, and actually also appreciated doing a prayer with Mr. and Mrs. Foster and that was, that was beautiful, we had a very positive experience. And also I had an emergency meeting down in Las Vegas, we flew down and we flew back up, we flew longer than the meeting, that's why NIAA, and it was to have a unanimous decision, vote for lacrosse, to have an inaugural season in February of 2027. So we're going to see how that goes, hopefully we have enough schools to actually have a league. And then I did also attend the Debbie Smith Ribbon Cutting, that was beautiful, and then lastly, Aviation Academy, Mr. Matic, unfortunately I wasn't able to stay, but I am representing today for AACT, so I just want you to see this, that I'm wearing this, thank you.
I think I only have pictures on Debbie CT, so I'm just going to do a few things before that. The WCSD Kickoff Academy for recognizing the achievements throughout the district, it was an uplifting event. And Deputy Superintendent Tiffany McMaster and Superintendent Joe Ernst did a fantastic job in the presentation and just a very positive event. I did go to the AACT Aviation Academy for the ribbon cutting, the simulators are crazy, are crazy, Principal Matic, Josh Hartzog, amazing work went into this, our very own Adam Mayberry had a huge voice and what with Tom Green, Tom Hall, amazing individuals to get this off the ground. Summer graduation at HUG High School, our kids never give up and we don't give up on our kids, that's all I want to say to that. Then the Debbie Smith, this is like a regular ER room at the Debbie Smith in the, the nursing program and went to the ribbon cutting. I, this has personal meaning to me, a new friend to me, Lily, graduated from Desert Skies and with the intervention of Principal Quintana and her grandparents getting behind her, she was struggling, but Lily applied to the Nursing Academy this, this coming year and she will be in the class, the first class for the Nursing Academy and she's very excited, so excited, I did the tour twice because she asked me to go on to the tour with her and her mom and her grandma, so I got to do it the first time around, but it had meaning the second time when I got to see her little face looking at what she's going to have access to. Debbie Smith, what a fabulous woman that the school is named after, lots of great things, I mean, the agriculture, the animal studies there, so many, the welding, these are some of the, the dummies, but I mean, they're so lifelike, I had to include Beth, I had to include Beth, we egged her on, they had this big, huge drum and we're like, Beth, you've got it, you gotta do it, you gotta do it, and she was a good sport and she did, she did hit that big bass drum. So I also got to present our strategic plan to the NASB training last night and with Diane Nicolet's grace, she allowed me to, no, it meant a lot to be the presenter and the spokesperson and I got to brag a ton.
All right, well, the last two weeks have been really busy, I will share another awesome picture of our president, Beth Smith, I think this was a great start to back to school and so I, I really enjoyed continuing clapping season, I will take that from Dr. Di. And then I had the incredible honor of being asked to speak to our new teachers at the new educator luncheon and I have to tell you, it was, it was just such an honor to, to welcome them and to share my story and to go around and meet them all and I just, I really, really appreciate everybody who is involved in, in bringing all of our new teachers together, that was great. And then just like everyone else said, the Aviation Academy ribbon cutting was so cool to hear the story behind it and just to, to celebrate with the community. And then side note, I became a trailblazer parent yesterday, my son started the forensic science program yesterday, we're very excited. Friday, I got to supri, help surprise the Dodson teachers with a donation of school supplies from the Eldorado Circus Circus and Silver Legacy with the Education Alliance and I just want to huge shout out to the Eldorado Circus Circus and Silver Legacy and so many community partners, the news was full of all of the different community partners that were donating school supplies and it's so fun and exciting, I love school supply shopping, so this was really, really fun to get to pack it all up and surprise them. And then of course, we, many of us attended summer graduation and what an inspiring thing, I think I cried just as much as. just as much as I did as the Rise Academy graduation. It was really cool. I think the best part of it was seeing all of the kids from the different schools together as one graduating class. That was really cool. And the other thing, I think, the reason I shared this picture was because those stands were full, absolutely full. The excitement in those, for those families, that those students persevered to get to summer graduation, incredible. Really, really honored to get to be there. And then, we spent the first day of school, many of us, doing some, some school visits. Principal Hicks put us back to school. We had to do some data information yesterday before we got to visit the classrooms. We had to make sure we were prepared. And I really appreciate that. So she's doing a great job over at Hidden Valley, and I really enjoyed getting to, to experience that with everyone. So, I think that's it. Look at me.
All righty, I'll be done really quick here, probably 10 seconds. No, so I wasn't as fortunate to get out there as much as you. I had to do grandparent duty, so I was pretty much locked in. And, yeah, had to take care of all that. So I didn't get a chance to go to the first day of school. I really wanted to go to all that and join you with the marathon. But I will, starting tomorrow, I will do the walk at Trainer Middle School, both tomorrow and Friday. And then I've already outlined some other stuff to keep active and busy, so I'll have something the next time. So with that, I'll close it out.
All right. So I really enjoyed speaking at the WCSD Kickoff Academy. Thank you, trustee Hall, for showing that picture. I thought that was a great way to start everything, and that was also the unveiling of so much of the great news that we saw earlier today. Also want to congratulate Dr. J T Stark from the Data Analytics Team for their informing progress on urban education. That's really such a big, big deal. And I'm so proud of us, because we can follow the knowledge where it leads. The picture that's up here is attending the New Educator Luncheon. I got to tell you, trustee Hall, I just cried listening to you, being a teacher here in our district, being a trustee now, and the words that you said, your voice matters. Oh, my gosh. I was listening to the other new educators in the room say, wow, she was a teacher here? And like, that's what it's all about. So it was incre, I mean, you were the perfect choice to speak. The next one has two pictures. The first one, oh, is that the next one that I have? Okay. So that's the AACT Aviation Academy. The joyous look that you see there is Vice President Mayberry cutting the ribbon. It was amazing watching you speak, seeing your passion, an incredible program. I just can't believe that we have something of this magnitude. So, JJ, the other one is supposed to go first, the Debbie Smith 01. Can I have the other one? Okay. So for the Debbie Smith CTE Academy, the ribbon cutting, that was just truly amazing. Just so incredible when we put our minds to public education and properly funding it. And Debbie Smith was really a trailblazer. She's a maverick. She is what the mascot of that school is, and without her, none of this would be possible. That's not to suggest that many other people did not work to make WC1 happen, and all the people that have lifted it up since then. But if it was not for her tenacity, we wouldn't have it at all. The second photo, which is the same one that trustee Westlake had, for the record, it was Debbie Smith's own family who dared me to hit the drum. So I felt like, you know, and this is exactly why you do not let trustees go off-roading in a new building without chaperones. I, I also attended a mural kickoff at Libby Booth. The city of Reno is doing some fantastic artwork on the street to bring attention to pedestrian safety. I attended the school police awards, which was truly fantastic, and also attended the first day of school at Hunter Lake in Hidden Valley. And I will close you with a lovely young girl that I met at Hidden Valley. Her name was Izzy, and she was in the third grade, fourth grade, she was in the fourth grade. And she proudly said on that first day of school that she already has her intention to go to Debbie Smith CTE, because her passion is learning to be a welder. So there you have it, folks. That is our work happening in real time with these kids. Thank you. That closes item 4.02, and now brings us to 4.03, our superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Smith. Maya, I too would like to welcome you. We're really happy to have you as a, as a team member here, to value your voice, and know that you'll continue to provide us all kinds of good insights, and just know that we welcome that, and look forward to having you as, as a member of the, the Board of Trustees, okay? I also will just say, I believe I've taken up my full three minutes earlier today, and, and so I will yield these final three minutes for the good of the group.
Thank you. All right, that closes item 4.03 and Section 4 in its entirety, and brings us now to Section 5, our closing items. JJ, who do we have for public comment in item 5.01?
The board received emails from Jennifer Jameson and Marie King.
Okay, that closes item 5.01, and brings us now to item 5.02, our next meeting announcement, which is going to be Tuesday, August 26, 2025, and now 5:03 adjournment at 6:23 PM.